Welcome to our afternoon session of our city council meeting. Once again, we are doing it online and by now I think a lot of people are getting used to Facebook, Zoom, Google Meet, all the different ways that we communicate with each other. So I'll call the meeting to order. And I'd like to introduce your caring city council, Dan Albert, Alan Hoffer, Ed Smith, Tyler Williamson. And I'm Clyde Roberson. It's an honor to be the mayor of the city that we love and all take care of together. As we go along, you're going to be meeting a lot of our very acclaimed city staff. Okay, so everybody get warmed up. This is the A day. And before we get started, it's always our custom with the governor's orders, how to conduct a meeting online. So I'm going to turn it over to our able assistant city manager Nat Raja Nasathira, who will tell everybody how this works and how you, the public, can join us. We're sorry we don't get to see you in person. And I know it's, it's difficult to do public comments sometimes on the telephone, but we're going to do everything we can to include you because you are so valuable. We really appreciate those who are able to join us. So Nat, would you explain the format, please?
Yes, I will, Mayor Roberson. We do encourage members of the public to watch the broadcast on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of about 10 seconds. Remember for the public can watch at youtube.com/cityofmonterey or on the YouTube app or the Google Play or Apple App Store. To make a public comment when viewers are watching live either on YouTube or Channel 25, you will see a Chyron, also known as a lower third caption on the bottom of your screen. At that time, we encourage you to call into the conference line, dial area code 831-225-0330. And when prompted, enter the code 1927648. Once you've entered the system, dial star five to raise your hand, and you'll be added into the queue to speak. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it is their turn to speak. We do ask that callers, please turn off television or computer speakers or go to another room while connected by phone as any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I will be calling on each caller in the order of their hands raised and call out the last four digits of each caller's phone number before I unmute them. That will be the procedure for our meeting today.
Good, thank you very much, Nat. And let's get back to, here we go. Oh, okay. And now I've got to find out where you all are. There you are. Let us have a few moments of silence for senior millennials and computers.
You're here.
I think I'm the only one who qualifies. And so first thing we are going to do, and that is it's such an honor for all of us as a city council to recognize the Defense Language Institute Quarterly Joint Service Awards. As we all know, in our city, it's very proud to be the language capital of the world. And several reasons for that, Middlebury Institute, all of our K-12 schools, Naval Postgraduate School, MPC, CSU MB, did I say Middlebury? And of course, the Defense Language Institute. Now normally, we would have the opportunity for our recipients to be with us live. And it's always such a joy to see them, their families and the support staff. And whether they're students or if they are on staff, often they will share comments in the language that they have learned. And then we have fun trying to guess what it is. We're getting pretty good at it. Then finally, we follow up with an English translation. It's really interesting when you think about what the Defense Language Institute does for our city and our country. It, the Defense Language Institute graduates around 3,000 students yearly. And there are about 50,000 DLI-trained linguists throughout the world from all the military services. From 17 languages, French, Spanish, Indonesian, Hebrew, Farsi, Russian, Tagalog, Urdu, Modern Standard Arabic, Egyptian Arabic, Iraqi Arabic, Levantine Arabic, Sudanese Arabic, Chinese Mandarin, Japanese, Korean, and Pashto. And then it's always interesting to look at what the large schools are there because they are often a reflection of what's going on in the world just by the languages that are being taught. And so to earn this award, the recipients compete to display their knowledge in a variety of service projects. And I'll share those in a moment as part of a proclamation. And of course, it's something that's very prestigious and we know that our recipients work very hard to earn. So the proclamation that I would share is going to honor three linguists recipients. There's Sergeant John Cola Luca, United States Marine Corps, Sergeant Michael Roger from the US Army, and Lance Corporal David Bowler from the US Marine Corps. So I'll read the proclamation that we're so proud to sign and send to them. And so this is a proclamation honoring the Defense Language Institute's Foreign Language Center's Quarterly Joint Service Award recipient. And as I said, the recipient Sergeant Cola Luca, Sergeant Roger, and Lance Corporal Bowler. Whereas the Defense Language Institute Foreign Language Center has established the Quarterly Joint Service Non-Commissioned Officer Petty Officer and Junior Enlisted Board. And as recipients of the award are our aforementioned gentlemen, have demonstrated extraordinary personal abilities, leadership skills, and knowledge of the history of the procedure, chain of command, world events, customs and courtesies, first aid, code of conduct, uniform code of military justice, military leadership, and the Armed Forces insignia. I always pause after reading that paragraph because we often think that the military friends, they go to the Defense Language and they learn a language and then they're off to their next assignment. But there's far, 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 far more that they do to become the people that they are. And just that summary just shows you how dedicated they are. Monterey community is very proud of the country's service members as well as our outstanding relationship with the Defense Language Institute. So on behalf of the city council and our citizens, it's a really pleasure to recognize once again John Cola Luca, Sergeant John Cola Luca, Sergeant Michael Roger, and Lance Corporal David Bowler. And at this point, normally in our council meeting, we would hear from each of our recipients. So we certainly congratulate them. And hopefully they're be able to watch and know how much we appreciate them. And of course, their families. And that's always very touching because they can't do it alone. And so we're so grateful for the families and the sacrifices that their family made throughout the military careers. So with that, with our appreciation, unless I know otherwise, we'll continue on to our next item.
I don't believe we have no public comment at this time. And we've had the Chyron up, so we are good to go.
Excellent. All right. Okay, so good, thank you. And I have another proclamation. And rather than read that, what I'd like to do is turn this part of the meeting over to our accomplished city manager Hans Uslar, who can introduce our Parks and Recreation leader, who will share something very important to us, especially during the shelter in place. As we know, our recreation department, which is one of the probably the most amazing departments for a city its size. I was talking to a fellow mayor and we were talking about the impacts of COVID-19 and the fact that many of our programs couldn't continue. And I had asked, well, how is that impacting your city? And he said, well, we only have two recreation people on their entire staff. And of course Monterey has, as I said, one of the most outstanding recreation departments anywhere and especially for a city of our size. So our accomplished city manager, take it from there, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. July is the Parks and Recreation Month of the year. July is dedicated as such. And it is a great honor to introduce our able Parks and Recreation Director Karen. And what I wanted to say is before Karen does the presentation, there is a life after COVID-19. And there will be a life where our Parks and Recreation Department again will be dominating the summer and will create memories for generations of Montereyan children and young adults. So there will be again hundreds of high school students that will be employed as recreation leaders across our town. And there will be an annual program where we will work jointly with seniors, with adults, with young adults, and of course, the crown jewel of all of the Monterey residents, our sports. So there will be a life after that. So what we are presenting today to you is a little bit bittersweet, but I want us to look at the promise in the future and as something that generates the well-deserved hope that we all are looking for. And with that, I hand it over to Karen.
Thank you, Hans. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, Mayor Roberson and council members. Thank you so much for recognizing July 2020 as Park and Recreation Month. As you know, our summer has been far from typical. And instead of our traditional summer filled with recreation opportunities such as camps and sports activities, special events, playground programs, swimming lessons, and more, the department is focused on supporting the community during COVID-19, like serving in the Emergency Operations Center and providing essential services such as Operation Outreach phone calls, food distribution, blood drives, virtual recreation, live stream group exercise programs, and major park improvements. The proclamation recognizes several efforts of Parks and Recreation, including the importance of access to local parks and recreation, as well as our trails, open spaces, and facilities for all citizens, as well as creating memorable experiences through engaging virtual and physically distanced programs, dynamic online events, new learning opportunities designed to keep families active during our stay-at-home orders while they're in place and beyond. So I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to the leadership of the city council, the advocacy for the Parks and Recreation Commission, the support of the community, and the dedication of our city employees. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Eric Palmer, who will share his video creation depicting just some of the many contributions of the Parks and Recreation Department during the pandemic. Not sure if we could hear the music. Can you guys hear it?
No, I'm not hearing music. It looks like we have some sound issues. You know, what I can do is I can try to present. And we'll see if this works. So let's see if this can work. I'll take over the screen and let's play it. That's the presentation and we have it live on our YouTube page as well for folks to watch.
Good, we always enjoyed that very much. Thank you, Karen, and thank you for highlighting everything that Recreation Department is continuing to do. And as our city manager said, we look very forward to having things back to normal because the need is so great out there, especially for childcare and our youth and seniors, many, many people missing our facilities, including our sports center. So thanks, Karen. All right, we'll go to public comments. And these are any items that are not on the agenda. If you want to speak to any agenda items, those watching. And again, thank you for joining us. Please wait until that agenda item comes up. So this is anything not on the agenda you'd like to bring to the attention of the city council or city staff. If you leave a contact and our staff will respond to you. By law, Brown Act, we can't respond or get into the discussion right now. We can provide information and clarification. So with that, we'll ask again our assistant city manager, if there's anyone in the queue who wants to speak. And please recognize the three-minute limit. And secondly, hopefully your comments are within our jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. Because I know a lot of folks do ask us for various items through emails and so on. And unfortunately, some things are out of our control, but those things that are within our jurisdiction, we're more than happy to help. Nat?
Great, we just put up the Chyron stating that we are taking public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And let's see if we have any. There are a few people who called in, but no one has raised their hand yet. So we do, if you do intend to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, please dial star five. And our first caller will be someone, we don't have their information, but we'll go ahead and unmute them. Hi there, welcome to the council meeting.
Well, thanks so much. And who do I have the honor of addressing?
This is the Monterey City Council. If you could please state your name and your place of residence.
Fantastic. So I'd like to address the entire city council. And I'm calling regarding this signage staffing all over town, especially on the Wharf and in Canary Row downtown, regarding a face mask order and a $100 fine. And so I'm wondering what is the legal basis for this order? And what actually, as a matter of fact, I've actually called the Monterey County Board of Supervisors and I called all of them asking for any evidence of an imminent threat of a medical emergency. And I don't see, none of the Board of Supervisors has provided you with any such evidence. And so, you know, we're four months in and the evidence shows that the hospitals are empty. There have been thousands of medical staff layoffs. Those who have not been laid off have had their hours cut significantly. There is no evidence of excess mortality from year to year, 2020 to 2019. There have been a number of citations of cases increasing, COVID cases increasing. Well, this is based upon a PCR test, which is invalid. Being better of the test, Kerry Mullis has stated explicitly that the PCR test is not valid as a test for diagnose, as a test to diagnose contagious disease. So I've also seen evidence that face mask packaging states explicitly that face masks are not effective in preventing the spread of contagious disease. There is absolutely no evidence of a medical emergency of any kind. Therefore, the, this notion of a shelter in place order is completely invalid. So really, I just wanted to provide some evidence that face mask packaging states that face masks are ineffective. It is actually unhealthy to breathe tiny cotton and/or polyester and/or plastic fibers from a face mask for any extended period of time. As a matter of fact, it's very unhealthy to wear a face mask for any extended period of time. OSHA guarantees a 19.5% oxygen level for all employees, but oxygen levels drop precipitously after just a few seconds wearing any sort of a face covering. So I see no legal basis for this face mask law. It's absolutely invalid. If based strictly upon a guidance, which is not an executive order, all executive orders are listed on the governor's webpage, on a specific page, which lists them numerically and quantologically. The guidance for a face covering is not listed. Therefore, it's not an executive order. It does not carry the force of law. There is no criminal or civil liability attached. And therefore, any order to wear a face mask in the city of Monterey is null and void unless it's simply a guidance or a recommendation or advisory. There is no ticketing possible. It is not constitutional under the state constitution or the United States constitution. It is completely invalid.
All right, we've got the time limit. Thank you so much for calling. We appreciate everyone who calls in. And I don't believe we have any other, oh, we have one more here. Hi there, Esther. Your live with the Monterey City Council.
Oh, my God. Yeah, hi, everybody. I cannot believe what I just heard this previous caller say. Clearly, he is more interested in taking a chance than most of the residents here are interested in doing. I don't even have words. I wasn't going to speak, but the comments were just so outrageous that I just had to leave you all with the fact that yes, even though our numbers that are being reported currently are two weeks old because that's the amount of time that it takes to get the testing done, which is a problem in and of itself because we're making decisions on data that is two weeks old and not, if not current, as the reports seem to make us think they are. But, you know, I don't even know what to say to this previous caller because all you have to do is turn the news on. And regardless of what news station you're watching and where you fall on the political spectrum, denying that we are in any kind of medical crisis is just a complete level of cluelessness that is dangerous to, not only to the caller, but to everybody that the caller comes in contact with. So while I don't particularly like the way that the local, state, and national government has been handling this crisis, I certainly would say we should at least, at the very least, continue doing what we've been doing because if had we not even done that, we would be looking at a much worse case scenario. And the reopening that everybody keeps talking about would be way, way further down the line. Thank you.
Thanks, Esther. And we have no other public comments for items that are not on the agenda tonight.
All right, thanks, Nat. The next item then will be our consent agenda. Council members, Ed Smith would like us to pull items seven and item nine for a brief report and discussion. Any other council members have an item they'd like to pull from the consent?
I just have a question on number six.
Okay. Council member Tyler, why don't you go ahead and ask it, please?
Mayor, so I was just wondering, how do we determine? And I'm imagining maybe the process isn't fully figured out yet, but how do we determine which agencies get what funding and when? How is that determined? We're going in partnership regionally and I'm just wondering how that's appropriately distributed amongst the participating agencies.
Yeah, I will ask Kim to address that, please.
Thank you, council member Williamson and city council. The program is just an idea at this point for Monterey County. And so I asked very similar questions and some more detailed ones beyond that. And I think where the county housing staff is, is they are applying for the grant. They would ultimately be putting together a group to administer and help the administration. They initially talked to the, or I guess are brainstorming that the city of Sleeness in Monterey County would administer the Regional Housing Trust Fund if it's created. So the resolution that you're looking at says that we will, that we support the formation of this group, that we're going to look at participating in it. And as it develops, we will look at funding, specifically looking at additional grant funding to potentially contribute to it. So I really wanted to see how this group forms and what are the regulations and what are the guidelines before we commit.
Thanks, Kim. That's really helpful. And I'd also ask if it's possible for this to come back to the council just for informational purposes, because I think this is some good information for the public to know as well in regards to opportunities for additional funding that may be coming down the line for us. Thanks again, Kim.
You're welcome.
Okay, Nat, were there any public comments on the consent? Let's see, we do not have any public comment on items that are, that are consent items not to be called.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items number seven and nine, I believe. Is that what Ed wanted to?
That's correct, thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a second. A roll call, please.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Albert.
Yes.
Council member Hoffer.
Yes.
Council member Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. All right, thank you. Let's go to item seven. And Ed, would you like a brief report since you pulled that? I think a brief overview would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, good. And this was something that we had discussed at our last meeting and asked the staff to bring back some information. So Hans, we'll kick it to you and your very adept staff.
Yeah, I acknowledge that, Mr. Mayor. And I punted over to our director of public works, Steve Wittry, who will, together with our parking superintendent Christie Steffi, provide you with a brief overview over the parking discount programs that we have currently in the city of Monterey.
Thanks for that, Hans. And Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and start with that. As you mentioned, on June 16th, the city council asked for some information on the waterfront parking. It was specifically related to an item that we had brought forward to extend the Locals program for another year to support that program on the waterfront area. I will note that when reading through this report today and giving it to you, the very first sentence on the report in your package has a typo on it. And the typo is that it says we're extending it to June 30th of 2020. And in fact, we're extending it to June 30th, 2021. Apparently, you know, go in reverse already. So tonight's report is really just more information about what the report, the discount program, and what it entails and how it would have been impacted basically if we use 2019 data. So the parking discount program, the Locals program, came to light in December 2002. It was a joint effort from the Fishness Work Association and the city of Monterey. It was Wednesday night specials. It was a one day a week special. It was a one day, one day a week special to provide locals the opportunity to enjoy discounts at, uh, most of the restaurants and some of the gift shops. And, and the city offered free parking to encourage, um, participation at the work. Um, after the first couple of months, it seemed to be a rousing success. Uh, data was provided by the vendors on the, on the wharf, um, and the city decided to extend the program, uh, to a more, more regular Wednesday and Thursday, uh, program. Over time, um, the report or the, uh, the discount, um, expanded and 2009, it became the program that it is today, which is Monday through Thursday, uh, two hours free for, uh, for locals. Um, of note, as, as the city has expended that, that process, expanded that process, um, today, we don't really have, um, any specific discounts for locals provided by the vendors on Fisherman's Wharf. They do have a VIP program that's available for anybody, but a locals only, um, is not something that's, that's supported directly by the vendors out there. And because of that, or maybe partially because of that, they don't have any data to support how the locals are benefiting directly from this process. They don't have that data available. Um, parking superintendent Kristi Staffey has reached out to, to the contacts over there, Ms. Brickman and so forth. Um, and they just don't track that data for how it impacts them with locals. Intuitively, it makes sense. We're getting something back. It's bringing something back, uh, to the community, but we just don't have any data to support with that, that process, is or how it's going. Um, so that's kind of where the program came from. The parking fund, you know, uh, in, in the letter, it identifies the parking fund is an enterprise fund with the city of Monterey. Uh, by ordinance, twenty-five percent of the revenue from the parking fund goes to the general fund to support general fund operations. Um, based upon the geography and, and the lot, a certain portion of the waterfront lot goes to the Marina Fund to help support that. That was established back to when that Marina Fund was established to help pay for the seawall and so forth. We're doing construction out there, as council is well aware. We just finished phase one not too long ago. Phase two will be, uh, going to construction hopefully, uh, this off season, which is the Marina Lot. Once that project is done, we're going to come back to council to realign the different boundaries that we have with Tylenz and Marina Fund and Parking Fund to make sure that it's appropriate for the, the, the share of, of revenues is, is shared. Uh, right now in 202019, uh, there was a twenty-two percent share that went to the Marina Fund. Um, in the report, we have a few basic data points, just some statistics on the lot. We had roughly a quarter million transactions, uh, over the course of 2019, which resulted in about $1.3 million of revenue. Uh, simple math is about $5 a ticket is what we were basically collecting for the revenue that was coming in through the process over there. Um, revenue waived for the locals' program, um, discount program, uh, total, all backing up a little bit. There are five discount programs currently offered at that particular parking lot. All five of them, the grand total of discounts, uh, or fees waived was $158,000. Specific to the locals' program, that's $82,000 of locals' program made was, was, was attributed to the locals' program of the 158,000. Um, Marina transfer, roughly got 250,000 and then Parking Fund, 665. And the general fund is about 221,000 from 2019 figures from that particular parking lot. Um, like I say, we went through different programs that we have. We have five currently. Um, that's kind of what we, we, we operate. At council's request, we looked at extending, uh, to a seven day a week, uh, program for, for locals. We also looked at extending for four hours and ran different scenarios. It was a four hour program Monday to Fri- Monday to Thursday or a four hour program seven days a week. Uh, we provided some figures for council's consideration on that to see the level of impact that we would have. Um, and, you know, as an example, as we go through this, um, if we would have expanded the, um, I don't know my other chart here. If it expanded the, the, the program, it would have been about $203, $203,000 as a, a fees waived for a seven day program. Um, if we would extend that program for, um, oh, see that's. Here we go. I apologize for that. I was losing my place here. If we extended it for four hours, uh, that program would have been a, a four hour Monday to Thursday program, the total would, fees waived would have been $103,000. If we included the Monday through, through seven days a week program essentially, um, it would have been $272,000 of fees waived for, for our program seven days per week. Um, resulting in a total net waived fees of $348,000, if that's included with the five fees that are done for that, which is about, um, twenty-seven percent of the entire revenue of the waterfront lot. Um, those are some numbers that we have there. Moving forward, we have a, a, perhaps a better way to, to move forward. Uh, as you may recall, in the last staff report that we gave, we identified that what staff wanted to do was extend the current program for a year to give us time to work with the community, the business associations, and the various, uh, interested parties to try to come up with a singular program that could be operated through our new technology. Uh, as you're well aware, we're installing new technology in our larger parking lots, the waterfront lot, the garages, uh, Canary Row and downtown garages. Um, and we can offer different discount programs that are uniform across the city that make a little more sense. Um, this could be just a simple, you know, our, 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 um, resident program with a voucher for a, a $10 voucher at all of our lots that could be done. We could run an actual more, um, voucher program or validation program where we work with restaurants or shops and can provide validation on individual tickets that can be used with their tickets as they park, uh, in the facilities. And that could be something that could be more partnered with those, those, um, businesses. And they can use as a part of their advertising or part of their, their ability to attract different people, uh, to their shops, um, using whatever metric they wanted to use, whether they spent a certain amount of dollars or spend a certain amount of time in the shop, they can choose to validate appropriately. Those programs take time to work out. Um, and that's why, like I said, the recommendation in June 16th was to extend it for a year to allow us to work with the community, to come back to council, to have a program that can be put in place by, um, Memorial Day of, uh, 2021. That's my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, assistant city manager Nat, any, um, public comment on that?
We do have public comment on this item and we'll start with the comment from Wendy Brickman. Wendy, thanks for joining.
Sure. Hello, everyone. I'm speaking on behalf of the Fisherman's Wharf Association regarding the locals' parking program in the waterfront lots, to seek with discussing. I just want to mention that this program is very, very important for the waterfront businesses that benefit from locals to park in the waterfront lot and that we really want to keep them in the parking, um, area as long as possible for free, so that when they visit the wharf, they don't feel rushed. You know, out of county visitors are going to be much fewer once we hit adverse weather after the summer that will affect outdoor dining, whale watching and our other boat businesses and retail shopping. Also, the $600 incentive unemployment benefits will end on July 31st and people will have less money to spend that will have a negative effect on the economy and tourism in Monterey. So now more than ever, with shelter in place and limited outdoor seating, we need to offer any incentive to entice our locals to support our wharf businesses. And tenants continue to pay rent on a hundred percent of their footprint of their lease while not being able to use the majority of the space. Also, although it's hard to obtain exact quantifiable statistics about Monterey resident business from the wharf merchants, since I began working with the wharf for the past several years, from a number of comments made by the owners, it does seem like many more locals have been enjoying the wharf's restaurants, shops and boat businesses, as well as Whale Fest and our other popular wharf events. I did look back at our Google Analytics report for the past five years and Monterey residents are listed typically in the top two or three most frequent users of MontereyWharf.com website, with San Francisco showing twenty percent and Monterey next showing nine percent. So I feel it's working. So we feel that the waterfront locals' parking programs are very important to the economic effects of the wharf businesses and the city of Monterey, and we look forward to working with Steve and Kristi to work out, um, a program that's effective when you have your new automated equipment. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Wendy. Our next caller is Esther Malkin. Hi Esther, welcome back.
Hello again. I wanted to kind of echo what Wendy just said, but from the perspective of residents, not necessarily businesses. So, um, keeping a small gesture like this available for locals, um, for us to, you know, enjoy part of the reason we put up with the over tourism that we've been experiencing the last decade or so, would, would definitely, um, buy you guys some good, um, just neighborly goodwill, uh, because, you know, the, the situation that renters, uh, that, that residents put up with on a daily basis when we, when, as our tourist industry continues to grow, impacts our daily lives, not our vacation once in a while lives, like these people who are coming here, um, are having to deal with. So, um, I just want to point out that, um, this is not the best year for you guys to be doing any kind of comparisons on, on the use, given that we're in the situation that we're in, you're not going to have an accurate apple to apple, um, comparison. Um, I just want to make a statement that I can count on probably one hand, as in the 20 years that I've lived here, the number of, of residents that knew about the program before they saw me, um, actually use it when we were driving out of the parking lot. So I found out about it through the community academy that I attended back in 2013. So I would imagine that if that information is put out there a little bit more, there would more than likely get more youth out of it. Um, I, I would support, um, strongly support extending it to the seven day a week proposal for, and keeping it at two hours, um, because I think that that gives residents a better access to the activities that go on every day of the week there. And frankly, none of us would complain about having to pay an hour or so and not feel rushed. Um, and, and as opposed to limiting it to Monday through Thursday, which basically eliminates all weekend activities. The people do work here, believe it or not, that may have to, you know, be able to enjoy things going on on the weekend. Um, lastly, I want to, I want to bring up the point that the residents have a serious lack of confidence in the way the city has handled the, the mask issue and all the tourism reopening and whatnot. And taking a program away from this is going to seriously impact the amount of coming out that the, the locals are going to be willing to do when, someday, when this whole thing is over. And that's more than much is going to be when that area is going to need the locals to show up more and more.
All right. Thank, thank you.
That's going to impact how many people will show up.
Thank, thanks so much, uh, as always. Our, um, next caller, I, well, let's, let's just first remind folks, um, we have some people on the line who don't have raised hands, so star five, if you wish to raise, uh, raise your hand, just a, a reminder, uh, that star five is, is the number, uh, to dial once you're in the system. Um, our next caller, I believe, is Susan Nine. Hi Susan.
Hi Nat. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, for taking my comment and, um, good evening all. Um, I do support the benefit provided to wharf businesses and local residents by providing a two hour window for free locals' parking. However, because of the city's urgent need to maximize revenue at this present time, I do not support extending these hours unless wharf businesses pay the city revenues equivalent to those waived to locals during an additional window of free locals' parking. Um, this request, I believe, came from wharf merchants, um, because they profit during expanded hours for more local customers. And if that is the case, making up the parking fees lost to the city by reimbursement to the city, or at least partial reimbursement, may be a win-win solution that will benefit the locals in a way that will not end, end the wharf merchants without, um, having a negative impact on the current financial situation. Two thousand and three, $203,000, sounds like a lot of money right now. So I, I think something needs to be worked out that, um, benefits everyone, including, um, not hurting the, um, city's budgetary issues. Thank you.
Great, thank you Susan. And, uh, looks like we have no other public comment on this item.
Okay, good. Thank you, as always, we appreciate that. And so, uh, council member Ed had pulled this with the understanding this is not an action item, but receiving it a report. Ed, did you want to make a, a comment or two since you pulled it, please?
Uh, yeah, I will. Thank you, thank you very much Steve and the callers that are paying attention to this. Uh, I appreciate the fact that we had, um, an error of the date, so it is in fact, uh, running through to 2021. So we still have a local, a locals' discount program for the two hours, Monday through Thursday. Um, I missed the cost of what it would be that we would not collect if it was a seven day a week, two hours a day. What was our lost revenue under that?
So the, the delta, it's an additional 120,000 or, or a total of 202,000 that would be lost if it was extended seven days a week, two hours.
Okay. Uh, say that again, because the computer bleeped.
Sorry. So it's a hundred and $2,000 in addition to the $82,000 that's already waived.
Okay, that's right.
For a total of 203,000, that would be waived for a seven day program.
Okay, good. I, I got that, thank you. Sorry for the glitch in the electronics there. Uh, I want to point out what you've already pointed out, which is an opportunity in the coming months to, um, really work on the city resident, uh, $10 annual permit, because I think that is, that's really where the bargain is for our locals, to be able to participate in that. But, uh, what's not listed here is what they get for the $10. So could you tell us now and then I'll, I'll leave you for the next, uh, four or five months to work with, uh, collaborate with our local businesses to see what can come of that. So how, how can a resident benefit if they pay you $10?
That will give them two hours free parking in any of the three, uh, or anywhere, anywhere three areas, downtown, Canary Row or waterfront.
And in how many days a week is that?
As, as often as they want.
And that would be seven days a week for two hours for $10, for $10 for an annual pass.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I think that really is the opportunity for the residents to, uh, jump on that and, uh, get down and support your local businesses. With that, uh, Mayor, that's the only comment I have.
Oh, very good, thanks Ed. Hey, where do I get a deal like that? I like that.
Good deal.
Good deal. Uh, council member Alan, uh, some thoughts, please?
Yeah, um, I appreciate this being brought to us. The, I'll just confess, I've lived in Monterey almost 20 years and I've never actually understood the free locals' program until today. And I think that tells you that it's a problem. Like we need to simplify this. Uh, and so I really look forward to the staff coming back with a, in my opinion, it should be at most two programs, one for local Monterey residents and one for county residents. Um, because it's just too confusing, having this time of year and that time of year and there's the summer and there's the winter and the winter is really nine months of the year, not three months of the year. Uh, it's just too confusing and I don't think, uh, I don't think it's effective, you know, because people don't know about it because it's too complicated. So if we really want this to be an incentive, we have to make it simple and then we have to market it. And I also like the idea of the businesses partnering with us, so that it's really a genuine partnership. Then I think all parties are kind of interested in making sure that it actually is working and driving more revenue. Um, so with that, I think staying, we, we want to continue with what we're doing. Uh, I don't think we can afford to expand the hours at this time. So I, I support what the staff are doing and I look forward to seeing a simplified, streamlined and, and hopefully in the future, better marketed program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right, then, I, I don't think any action is necessary since it is receiving a report.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So, uh, excellent discussion as always. The other item- The other item that council member Ed pulled was the council stipend voluntary contribution. And council member Ed, did you want an overview of that or did you want to make a comment?
Um, I'll make my comment and then, uh, take the overview. Um, I know I've brought this up, uh, two or three times. We've talked about it and they've offered, that is something for, um, council members in the commission, uh, to be able to notify, um, finance and the city manager to give up on their stipend. So I've, I've learned a few nuances of how this may work. I think we should hear the staff recommendation of what we can do. But I would encourage commissioners and council members to, uh, take the bold step and, uh, give up their cash stipend. And I understand that many need to keep the insurance. But I think the city manager in this report is going to give us an opportunity to be able to help and contribute. And I want to say that I'm struck with, uh, several of the callers when we were going through the process of our budget, that our employees that were willing to give up 2% in a salary increase, which is a substantial brave and courageous thing for those employees to do. So at the very least, I think we owe it to, uh, our city and our labor groups to do the same thing and give back some cash and help the city as it gets through this, uh, financial crunch. So with that, I'll, I'll just listen to the report and just want to encourage people to consider doing, doing what many others have already started to do, which is give up their stipend.
Okay, good. Uh, Nat, any, uh, public comment?
On, uh, this item, we have no public comment, sir.
Okay. So I think what I'd like to do is just ask, uh, our, our staff, since we had a written report. I think our, our Hans, I think we're going to ask our, uh, admirable finance director just to say how this, uh, how, how this process would happen. I know several of us have already contacted the finance department and they're working on it. So, uh, Hans, with that, I think we're going to hear from Lauren.
Sure, absolutely. If you'd like to hear from Lauren, here's Lauren.
Okay, Lauren, what's the procedure to go forward, uh, as Ed is suggesting?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. So in order to implement the deductions, you'll contact me. We'll have a form and figure out your payroll deductions. You'll probably have two different amounts because you have different benefits that post bi-monthly and monthly. So it'll be a deduction out of your paycheck. So contact me. A couple of you have contacted me via email already. So likely this week, we'll be able to give you a form and let you know the amount that, uh, you should deduct. So you can achieve the objective of contributing towards the city's reopening and hiring fund.
Okay.
I have a question.
If I may add one more sentence, Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, uh, after council has, uh, that item, has dealt with that item, we plan on sending, uh, a letter to all boards and commissions, uh, with the expression of what the council intends to do and offering them the same way of contacting the finance department to consider waiving their stipends as well. And I apologize for the interruption, but I just wanted to add this to Lauren's report.
Uh, thank you, Hans. And, and so, uh, council member Dan, you wanted to make a comment or had a question, please?
Yeah, I just have a question. We can still, if we want to, instead of taking a deduction, we can still, uh, write a donation check to the city, to that particular fund, instead of taking a, um, instead of taking a deduction of some type. Can we still do that?
Sure. The city will not deny a contribution check.
I didn't think they would. I just wanted to make sure that we can do that also.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. And we'll, I'll look forward to seeing the paperwork on how, however we, uh, make, make that happen. So let's go to our public appearance and ask to approve a permanent local housing allocation grant application. Proposed activity plan. So Hans, it's yours and I'm, I'm imagining you'll want to, uh, punt that to our, our very alert Kimberly Cole, our community development director.
Yes, Kim is already active and I will, uh, uh, hand it over to Kim.
Very good. I got that.
Um, thank you very much. Um, agenda item number 10 this afternoon is regarding the permanent local housing allocation grant. And this is a grant offered by the state of California that cities can apply for. It's actually the third grant that we will have applied for, uh, trying to get, um, additional housing funds. And, um, just in terms of background, the city council actually approved us to apply for this, um, grant, um, at your last city council meeting. One of the things, um, in terms of background, the city is eligible for about $116,000 annually. Um, or for a five-year period, we're looking just shy of $700,000. Um, there's a wide variety of activities that are eligible for the grant. Um, and what we are proposing is, um, the city of Monterey just released the request for proposals for our affordable housing site development. There are four sites in the city of Monterey that the council is offering up for 100% affordable housing projects. What we're recommending is that 65% of the funds over the five-year period pre-development and development. The second source of funding that we were looking at is for rental assistance at 30,000 or at 30% of what we receive over the five years. And lastly, there is an administrative, uh, administration cost that's allowed of 5%. So we're looking, if the city is lucky enough to receive this grant allocation, um, to divvy it up in this fashion. Um, I do want to just spend a little bit more time and talk about the pre-development and development costs that we foresee with our affordable housing sites. Um, we most likely will be working with a nonprofit developer that specializes in affordable housing because our city goal has been to establish 100% affordability on these sites. They will have to apply for tax credits and other sorts of funding sources to help make those projects go, um, come together. In the past, we've been fortunate enough to have redevelopment funds or other funds to help, um, leverage additional monies that they are putting together for the development. So we really see this 65% um, helping leverage, um, additional rental housing units in the city of Monterey. In terms of rental assistance, the city this year, um, has a, will have a very robust rental assistance program that's funded $152,000 from the CARES Act. That's one-time money from the federal government. The remaining portion is from our program income. And HUD is allowing an exception this year for us to spend money in this fashion. We typically have a, a numerical limit of about $125,000 that can go to social service agencies or it could be used for rental assistance. So we anticipate the next fiscal year, our ability to fund rental assistance is going to be a very tough decision for our council because you would have to decide not to fund a lot of our great nonprofit housing providers like Gathering for Women and other, um, um, agencies that provide needed services. So we really see this grant as an opportunity to provide rental assistance and have that maybe become an ongoing program in our community, as well as address the pre-development and development costs for our low-income housing projects that we are envisioning. So with that, um, our recommendation is that the city council approve the permanent local housing allocation. Um, and specifically that, that chart that I just showed and that shows the, the grant allocation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Good. Any questions from the council before we find out if there's public comment?
Do I have a question, Mayor?
Okay. Well, I think council member Dan and council member Tyler both want to share. Okay, council member Dan, please.
Thank you. Kim, thanks for the report. I'm wondering, is this grant a competitive grant with other cities? And if it is, will our activity plan play into that competitiveness?
Um, the money has already been allocated by CDBG entitlement jurisdiction. So if our grant hopefully qualifies and we've checked all the boxes, we should receive the $116,000 annually.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Council member Tyler, did you have a comment or question, please?
Yeah. So if you can bear with me, I have a couple of thoughts here. Um, how much have we already allocated for the rental assistance program?
For this fiscal year?
That's correct. I'm, and then I'm, and I'm specifically speaking to the CDBG because I think that's all we have allocated so far at this point.
Correct. So we have $152,000 of CARES Act funding. And if our program income comes in as anticipated, it'll be another $650,000 of pro, um, program income. That can be extended from August of this year through, um, I believe it's July. I'm going to forget the budget year for the federal government. I know our timeliness test is in May. I think it's through July of, um, 2021. Starting with our next budget year, rental assistance, um, all of the exceptions that HUD has given because of COVID are not going to exist.
So you're, you're speaking to that 152K from the CARES Act?
As well as they gave an exception for the $650,000 to be spent on social services this year because of COVID.
I see.
Starting next year, we'll be back to our normal cap, which ends up, we usually have $125,000. We usually have 10 to 12 social service agencies competing for that money. Next year, the city council could choose not to give money to those 10 or 12 social service agencies and provide it for rental assistance. We don't see that as a win-win for our community. And what we've been trying to do is, we're good for this year. We, we funded our social service agencies. We have a substantial amount, amount of money for rental assistance. We're looking towards the next five years for rental assistance and being able to provide it through this grant.
Okay. So, so from the CARES Act and the CDBG regular programming, uh, funding, we have about eight, 800K.
If our program income comes in as anticipated.
Now, I, I want to make the distinction that the $152,000 from CDBG is from the CARES Act. And then our properties that we are running under our housing programs are generating revenues. And we, this is city of Monterey income that we though have to spend under CDBG rules because they are generated through our housing programs. And that's the funding that we have allocated this year with the permission of CDBG to a rental assistance program. Next year, you may also have, we will, in all likelihood, likelihood, also have housing program income that can be also anywhere between 600,000 to a million, to a million one. That funding again is housing program income that we then have to spend under the then current rule of CDBG on housing projects. That is in all likelihood, right now, not rental assistance programming. It can very well be if, if, if circumstances rise to that occasion. But again, I just wanted to make the, the nuance that these are not two CDBG funds. This is one CDBG funding that comes annually. And then we have housing program income that we have to spend under the CDBG guidelines.
Okay, so, so, so just to clarify, we have 800K about for the rental assistance program right now?
This year, yes.
And then if we get this, if we get this grant, we're looking at allocating 30% of that to rental assistance? Now, I, I guess part of the question here too is, when will, when do we anticipate receiving those funds? Um, and is, am I accurate to say that about 135K will be available for rental assistance based off of this allocation?
No.
So we, um, so the applications are due shortly here for the grant. It will take a while for the state of California. I would anticipate that the earliest we're going to have funding, you know, we're anticipating next fiscal year, to be honest. Um, that by the time they make their decisions, we enter into our grant contracts, that we will be looking at fiscal year next July. So that's the reason we're pursuing the money. And then I'm sorry, I forgot your other part to that question.
Yeah, the answer is the 30% of the grant amount can be allocated to rental assistance to help people avoid homelessness.
But just to clarify, it won't be, the, the, the total grant amount, if we get it, is about 130,000 a year. So under the proposal, we'd be looking at 30% of that being available for rental assistance if we get the grant. Is that correct?
Not, not entirely. The total grant amount over a five-year period, $698,000. And so the annual grant amount is something like $115,000 or something like that. That's $115,000 that we receive through as part of this grant we are applying for right now. Independent of that, there will be our annual CDBG allocation. That is usually something, as Kim pointed out, in the amount of, let's say, $120,000 annually. And we usually distribute that over 10 service providers. Uh, but that is also funding that the council can elect to, to use in the way they want to elect it and make it part of the rental assistance program. So ideally, you have 30% plus $120,000. But then, of course, as Kim pointed out, uh, we, we, uh, run into issues with other social service providers who are like Safe Place, for instance, Community Human Services, Salvation Army, et cetera, who usually are also doing a, a great deal of work in, in the area of homelessness and prevention of homelessness.
Okay. And then, um, uh, another question is, could we change the allocation later? Like if, let's say we're designating 65 and 30 right now, could we go back and make a request with the state later on if, for whatever reason, we have a need to change our programming?
I don't know. The, um, I, we usually are held to the grant application that we've submitted. Um, I read the grant guidelines. I did not see a provision for amendment. Um, but, and I, that usually comes with the actual grant agreement after we've received the allocation. If you disagree and think the pre-development development cost should be 50% and rental assistance should be 50%, you should tell us that now. Um, and we'll make that the, the grant application.
Okay. If I can comment on that, Kim, I would assume that, that we have to be in compliance with the grant and you'd have to write a compliance report. And if the, if the report states that it doesn't, that we're not doing what we said in the grant, then I would assume that.
We're also going to formal audits. They, they say that clearly in the grant paperwork upfront, that this will be an audited program.
Yes, Alan, please.
So maybe then it would help if you could explain kind of the rationale on the, uh, on the, the, the 65%, 60% for, or 65% for pre-development. I mean, because obviously, building that affordable housing is also very important to our long-term goals. So we don't want to end up in a situation where something gets stalled because we don't have the money to do the pre-development. But I don't know, like, I, I guess it would help to kind of hear some of the assumptions that were built into that.
So we have a challenge with timing, correct? We don't know who our affordable housing developer is going to be yet. We don't know what funding sources they're going to be eligible for in terms of tax credits and other items. Um, just based on our experience with the Van Buren Housing Project, we know that the more money that we as a local jurisdiction, as well as the value of land, can put into those, um, that financing, um, scenario, the higher those projects rank. And my guess is the, um, you know, we, we made an estimate. We looked at rental assistance of $35,000 annually seemed like a very good step in the right direction. You know, and at about, I think it's about $70,000 annually for the, um, pre-development development costs. We will fall short. I mean, there's, you know, I'm sure every developer we will work with will want more money than that, but they won't reject the $70,000 either. So we saw, you know, the other option, and we played with this, is 100% of the money goes to the city's affordable housing sites. But we could be really confronted with a situation next fiscal year of a really hard decision between 10 and 12 social service agencies versus rental assistance. And so we just thought this was an opportunity to continue that rental assistance program at 35,000. And I'm sure there's priorities that would rate those differently. It's just as Grant and I spoke about it, we thought this was a balance.
All right. So let's go to a public comment if there is any, then we can continue this discussion. Nat, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, there is. And our public comment today comes in from Esther Malkin. Esther?
Hello again. First of all, I want to say thank you to staff because their recommendation, in my opinion, is spot on. You all will remember how many times that, uh, renter advocates asked for rental assistance program. You all will remember how many times that renter advocates asked for a rental assistance program before COVID, and it took COVID to actually make it happen. And not doing things to keep in place after we hopefully recover sooner rather than later would be very, very short-sighted and unappreciated by those of us that have worked so hard to try and finally get the assistance in place. I also, you know, agree with staff on making sure that we have some leverage when we go after these city properties that are long overdue on being developed while they sit under used and basically the only way that we can get 100% affordable housing in this city. And those two should be the main priorities. And I think the way that they have allocated it makes complete sense. I don't see any reason not to go for this grant. I highly encourage staff to keep searching high and low for more grants like it. But this is a really, really good start to, you know, kick off the next fiscal year with something in the bank for the rental assistance program. And also to, you know, start the process and really make some headway on the units that lots that need to be developed. Because as you know, we're going to be up against double the rain of goals that we currently are sorely behind on meeting. And those units are really going to be the only way that the city's going to be able to make a dent in anything affordable. Because everything that comes before you, you know, up until now, has always been new development. And we only get 20% out of that. So I don't see any reason why anybody on the council should not go with this recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks, Esther. And just another reminder for folks, if you wish to speak on this item, please dial *5 to speak. And just checking, looks like we do not have any callers on this topic.
All right, okay, thanks, Nat. We'll bring it back to the city council that you want to discuss it. Ma, are you ready to take action?
I would make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Dan.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. I'll second it.
You didn't even hear the motion, Dan.
He was going to make the motion. Go ahead. That's fine. I'll just second it. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I muted myself. Yeah, I would move staff recommendation. I think it is a balance, and I think it's a good balance.
Okay, we have a motion now.
And I'll say that because I think our rental assistance program has been a big success in our city, and I'd like to see that continue.
Other comments?
I'll third that.
Okay. I just wanted a separate kind of question, but kind of related. Was the press release sent out already in regards to the RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on KSPW tonight.
Yeah, so I think that this is, I mean, I agree. I think this is a good balance, and it's very timely for this funding to come in in support of our effort to allocate funding for, or to create 100% affordable housing projects in this city. And hopefully, the idea is that we're expediting that as far as wherever possible. So I think it's great. I force it, I guess, to Ed's third.
Oh, we're doing an informal roll call. I fift it. Clementine, will you do roll call, please?
Here's the real roll call. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
And that's a yes for me as well. Thank you, everyone. Unless, I'm told otherwise, we're going to recess. And we'll see everybody at 7 o'clock tonight. Have a nice dinner, evening, and relaxation, and we'll see you shortly.
Arrivederci.
All right, very good, sir. Bye-bye, everybody.
Later, Sam.
And welcome, a warm welcome to everyone coming back as we reconvene our evening session. And the first thing we will do is ask our Assistant City Manager, Nat Roja Nasatera, to put up a flag on the screen for us, please. And as soon as we do that... Oh, good. That's Colton Hall, right? I like it. All right, would everyone join me, please, in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Actually, I would like to ask our altruistic city clerk to interject, please, your amicable city council.
Certainly. Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Hafa?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Roberson?
And I'm here. Thank you. So we didn't have a closed session, so we don't have any announcements. We did some really fine work this afternoon. So continuing on this evening, we have public comments. Anyone who wants to speak to the council and our staff about anything not on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. If you spoke earlier this afternoon, you had your turn. So we only get one turn, afternoon and evening. But if we have some folks who would like to talk to us about anything not on the agenda, if you want to talk a little bit about TOT a little later, please wait, and we'll be sure to hear from you. And Nat, would you like to explain, of course, once again, how people can access and how our meeting is conducted under the governor's orders, please?
Happy to, Mayor Roberson. We encourage members of the public to watch this broadcast on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. The public can watch at youtube.com/cityofmonterey or on the YouTube app, on Google Play, or the Apple App Store. To make a public comment, when viewers are watching live on YouTube or on Channel 25, you'll see the lower-third caption on the bottom of the screen. At that time, call the conference line. Dial area code 831-225-0330. And when prompted, enter the code 1927648. Once you've entered the system, dial *5 to raise your hand, and you'll be added into the queue to speak. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it's their turn to speak. We ask that callers, please turn off all television sets or computer speakers, or go to another room while connected by phone, as any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. We look forward to receiving public comment through this process today. And again, as a reminder, please dial *5 when you do call in. And if you could please follow along on the audio on your phone to make sure it's live, we greatly appreciate that as well.
All right, thank you, Nat. So we wait a moment, so people who have an opportunity to queue, if they wish to, please?
Yes, we can. And in the meantime, we do have a couple of callers already who called in. So we'll start. I'll start the timer and share the screen momentarily. But our first caller is Zoe Carter. Hi, Zoe. Let's see if she's there.
Hi, Nat. Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you. Perfect.
Hi, this is Zoe Carter. I currently serve the Architect Review Committee. And I didn't get to speak to this earlier, but I will be contributing high commission salary back to the rehire and reopen fund. And I will be asking my committee, my entire committee, to do the same and encouraging them to do that as well. I think it's our small part to do to help the city during this difficult time. And if we can get 100% participation on our Architect Review Committee, I think that would be a worthy cause. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I will be reaching out to the board to make that happen. And I will announce that at the next Architect Review Committee as well. Thank you all for your service and all you're doing during this difficult time.
Great. Thank you, Zoe. Our next caller is Gabriela Chavez. Hi, Gabriela.
Hi there.
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Gabriela Chavez, and I am Monterey resident and renter. And I just wanted to speak briefly. I had tried to comment on the first session meeting, but I made a mistake. I missed the time. And I just wanted to echo some of the things that Esther Malkin was saying in regard to the importance of the renter... I'm sorry, I've had a long day. The renter protection. I would be interested to know about who is actually eligible to receive that aid. But I think that it's something really important moving forward for the city to focus on, given that so many renters in the city are facing extreme hardship like never before. Although it's always been supposed to be a renter in Monterey. A lot of people are in a situation where they haven't been able to pay their entire rent or they're behind. And as the moratorium on eviction comes to a halt at the end of September, we're going to have a lot more housing issues to deal with as a community. So I understand that there's the question of balancing giving those funds to the community organizations and social services. But I would like to voice my opinion that especially certain services like Salvation Army, if you have ever worked with the homeless community, that you often like know that they are not adequately served by all these services. So there's room to think about whether, you know, that is the greatest cause. And I just wanted to make that known. Yeah. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thanks, Gabriela. And it looks like we just want to, again, remind folks, please dial *5 if you'd like to speak. And we will take one more caller here, James McIntosh. Hi, James.
Hi there. My name's James McIntosh. I'd been to the city council meeting about a month or two ago. And a gentleman, I believe his name was Germanic sounding, connected me to a man named Grant Leonard. And to the person with the Germanic sounding name, I apologize, it's so hard to say, but I believe it's Hans Borum. I think that was his name. But he did connect me with the Grant Leonard person in charge of housing. I was unable to attend the 4:00 portion of the meeting, so I'm really out of context. But I do want to echo what the woman who just spoke said. Apparently, the aid is going to be given to organizations. And organizations are not consistently behaving with integrity when they are given quantities of funds. I know that my landlord is threatening me with eviction. I've paid 66% of my rent. And I was, based on the last city council meeting I attended, I was made aware that three months of rent would be covered by the program and that the program was available to workers who were working in the city of Monterey and lost their jobs due to COVID. My girlfriend meets those requirements. And so we just want to voice again our support for that program. We want to voice that our landlord is actively threatening us with eviction despite having paid 66% of our rent on each month, despite our having notified him of the rental assistance program, and despite our having told him when we plan to pay. And so I'm feeling very threatened by my landlord. And I left a message for Grant Leonard. He informed me to tell him if I were having any kinds of problems. I'm horrified that the moratorium on eviction is ending in September. I just found out about that from the previous caller. You guys have to understand just how serious the situation is. I'm facing homelessness. My girlfriend is facing homelessness. My cat. I know it's not important to most people, but they will also be homeless. And so we, the people of Monterey, are really counting on you, the city council, to put this rental program forward and make sure that the money goes to the individuals receiving these stipends. I believe I'm out of time. Thank you for your work with the police as well.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback. Thanks for calling in. Our next caller, again, just reminding the public, we are continuing public comments for items not on the agenda tonight. And we'll continue with Tom Rowley. Hi, Tom.
Good evening. Calling this evening with an alert. It's not something that's a threat to downtown, to City Hall. However, there was an article in the Herald today alerting people that a bear has been sighted. And what was not included in the article in the Monterey Herald today was the fact that the cub is probably in the vicinity of a mama bear. And so this was cited in the Foothill School area, which includes Fisherman's Flats, the Joffrey Canyon area, Deer Flats, Aquahito Oaks, the Del Monte Fairways, and basically the Flats and Foothills area of Monterey. The big danger is, it may look cute, and it may look friendly. Don't be, do, take unnecessary risks. And we just need to make sure that, hopefully, if there's a corrected article in the Herald or on the news tonight, it was broadcast, the video reported this on Sunday evening. But it's been very, very minimal impact on follow-up. So the chances of the mama bear and the cub being in the area is still, you know, possible. And so I just call to advise everybody in the Flats and Foothills area of the possible danger. So thank you very much for letting me pass this on.
Great. Thanks, Tom. That concludes public comment for items not on tonight's agenda.
I didn't quite catch the third speaker's name, the gentleman who has spoken to us before. So I would encourage him to continue to work with our housing department.
Mr. Mayor, it was James, I wrote it down. It was James McIntosh.
Thank you, James McIntosh. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. And so I encourage Mr. McIntosh to stay in touch with our housing department and keep monitoring and encouraging us about the renters' assistance, which was what we were talking about. So we want to help them as much as possible and resolve that. We don't want to see anybody become homeless. And so we thank everyone for their comments. We'll go to our public appearance item, excuse me, public hearings. There are two public hearings, both of which are protest hearings, is my understanding. And these are long-established maintenance districts on Alvarado Street, as well as Cayet Principe Pal. And the point tonight would be to have a public hearing to find out if we had a 50% plus one protest, not wanting to continue the assessment, and also to confirm the engineer's report for the fiscal year. So with that, turn it over to our city manager. And I imagine he's going to want to have Steve Witry give us a brief overview. And perhaps we could, we might, we have to make two motions. But I certainly think we probably could have one presentation because they're basically the same, if that's okay. With that, let's go.
If...
It's actually...
Hearings. I'm sorry to interrupt. So we do need to have...
Oh, I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That was our astounding city attorney, who, as usual, said, can't do that. Okay. Steve, briefly, tell us what we're doing. I don't think we need an elaborate report then. Did we need to know if we had any protests?
Sure. And basically...
Sure. And basically, like you mentioned, this is an annual process that we do for both the Alvarado Street Assessment District and in the next item, the Calle Principale Assessment District. Essentially, this is a charge that's going to the homeowner, the property owners for services above and beyond normal services provided by the city. So basically, they get enhanced level of service to promote their businesses and keep that area particularly well groomed. As you mentioned, the Alvarado District has been going since 1985, at which time was created. And essentially what we do is we meet with the district contact, which in this case is Rick Johnson, and talk to him. And he represents the property owners, met with the property owners and determined that the best thing to do would be to continue the assessment as is for the coming year. With that, we sent out ballots and those ballots are received. And maybe somebody who wants to come and protest tonight and is able to speak and cast a vote that way. Otherwise Clementine, I believe, has received votes in the clerk's office, which she'll have to tally momentarily.
Yes, and I believe from past experience, she actually has to do that while we keep the public hearing open, while she tallies. I'm seeing a lot of yeses. Good.
Yep.
Okay, unless there are questions. Nat, do we have any public comments?
Let's take a quick look. It does not appear that we have any public comment and we've had the lower third caption up for the last minute or so.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll just, we'll momentarily wait while our city clerk does count any ballots that came in. And again, this is a protest hearing, so it's assessment districts are kind of a reverse of having a majority of yes. What you need is a majority of no, who say they do not want to participate. So we can just wait and.
Well, I'm going to run outside to the secure Dropbox and pick up any last ballots that came in and then I'll come back and count them on camera. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, while we wait, do you have any stories related to A or poems related to A or?
Well, yes, thank you. Well, as you know, I like to have a lot of fun with the adjectives. So I did go online and I got all the adjectives alphabetically and made a list. That's our applicable. Oh, there's one. But, and you all are great because you keep adding to my list. And I try to go through the alphabet and not be too repetitive. So if you have any Z adjectives or Qs and so on, I'll challenge everybody. Clementine, are you ready to do some counting?
I'm just starting opening up.
And of course, the count will be accurate. Oh, I like that. We have a double screen. We can actually see our city clerk Clementine opening the various documents. Very good. Mr. Witry, our Public Works Director, Steve?
Yep.
While she's doing that, it might be interesting to people to explain how is the vote weighted? Is it by frontage? How?
It is weighted by frontage, yeah, by the number of linear feet. So what we do is we identify the number of linear feet each property owner has on each of those frontages. Alvarado in this case and Calle P in the next item. And that's the determining factor for their vote and then how much their assessment will be. Essentially, on the Alvarado side, we're looking at, check my notes here, make sure I don't get them confused here. I actually did turn the page, getting anticipation here. But for the Alvarado side, we're looking at basically a $1.48 assessment per foot of their frontage. So in that case, if you had, you know, 10 feet of foot frontage, you'd be paying $14 a year. That's an annual fee for that. I'm sorry, it's a monthly fee for that extra service. And in the Alvarado District, what the services really come down to are additional sidewalk cleaning, as you can imagine with the restaurants and other things that we have down there, sometimes seems to get spilled a little more often. So we actually have a pressure wash for the sidewalks and things of that nature. There's a little bit in there for plant maintenance. The plants that are alongside the streets, they get maintained to make it look fresh. Obviously more than we do for the rest of our city.
So someone who had a large frontage would have a larger vote then?
Correct, and a larger assessment as well. So it's weighted on both sides of it. Yep.
Okay.
Because it's not, yeah, it wouldn't be fair for someone with a very small frontage to have the equal vote to someone who has a long frontage. It just doesn't make any difference.
Steve, could you explain what happens if we have a majority of no votes?
The assessment's not collected and basically those services don't happen. So basically what happens is part of the budgets that council has looked at is prospectively, a lot of this funding goes into the parks budget. And if that is not approved, part of that budget is not fulfilled essentially and it would be a reduction of services. Like I said, largely to parks because they do a lot of the maintenance and they do a lot of the contract handling for like the street sweep, the street spraying.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, since we have a little bit of spare time while we wait on item 12, keeping in the As, I'm going to abstain because I have an office in that district. So I'll abstain from that vote on item number 12.
All right, thank you.
And I noticed that Steve changed his offices and now it looks like he is in an atrium.
I drove home in between the meetings. I actually drove home. So this is plants at the office, these are the plants at the house.
Yeah, it looks like a very nice atrium since we're on the As tonight.
And that statement was attributed to Councilmember.
It was awful.
Councilmember. In US.
Yes.
So I am right next to Montreux's and they are serving dinners on the sidewalk because they obtained a encroachment permit and they look like they're fairly busy tonight. And while I'm here, I have to abstain from alcohol because I know that if I stepped out, I could enjoy a dinner and alcohol on the sidewalk at Montreux's.
Yes.
But how did you land on the As tonight? What was, why is the As, why is that one up?
Well, because I kind of run through a whole lot of the other categories. We did Cs last time. So you can look for, my B list is fairly short, so I guess I have homework. For our next meeting.
It's kind of predictable.
Some may think it's absurd, but I find it amusing.
Very good. Very good.
I'm just amazed every time I come to one of these meetings.
I'm going to tune in more often.
Did you hear the peanut gallery just then, my wife?
I'm going to tune in more often.
Paul, ready then? I think we're almost close to picking up the count. And when we're ready to do that, Clementine will need to unmute one of her microphones.
We're anxiously awaiting the results.
Okay.
I can't take this abuse anymore.
Okay. This is just the Alvarado District. I still have to do Calle Principale next. But this one passed with 78.6% of about yes.
Ah, okay. Good. So then I think, and then we are probably ready to entertain a motion to pass the resolution, which we, the next step, I believe?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. And I'll ask our city attorney again. That's the action that we're going to take whereas the agenda talks about, item is confirm Alvarado Street Maintenance, but we do that through a resolution.
Correct.
Okay, so we, there's no more discussion. We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution for the continuance of the Alvarado Street Maintenance District. Among her many other duties, she's not going to do roll call for us.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hapa?
Aye.
I was waiting for that.
Councilmember.
Yeah.
Okay, and Mayor Roberson?
Aye.
All right. Now I will run and grab, oh wait, never mind. After public comments on this next one, I'll run and grab the rest of the ballot.
All right, then again, we'll ask our Public Works Director, Steve, anything that would be different about this second public hearing with respect to the concept and the assessment may be different per linear foot? Anything that you'd like to bring to our attention, please?
No, it's virtually the same process. It goes from Polk Street to Del Monte. It's on Calle Principale. The assessment is 74 cents per foot on this one. It's not quite as dramatic at the level of effort that we do for the work that happens out there. Essentially, it's the same process though.
Yes, it's about half.
And I appreciate you letting me come to the process with the A, throwing an A in there, you know?
Okay. Thank, and add any public comment?
Okay, let's see. We have absent any public comment. We can continue.
I anticipated that.
Thank you.
Very good.
No public comment tonight on this item.
Okay. All right, then meanwhile Clementine, our city clerk, is going to go out and see if there was anything in the mailbox that was added at the last minute so she can do the tabulation.
Steve, I have a question. How often is this service provided to our businesses downtown on Calle Principale? I mean, is it once a week or when needed?
Calle Principale is really quarterly. It's really a quarterly on that one. And Alvarado is monthly, is an extra level of service for the actual hard washing and things of that nature. On Alvarado, like I said, it's a little bit higher frequency, it's a little more expensive. They have the plant maintenance that happens more frequently. Calle P really is just some extra maintenance in terms of the sidewalk sweeping. It happens on a quarterly basis and some other minor work that happens there, but it's not weekly.
And you mentioned that some of our departments take care of that. How much of it is contracted out?
Basically, the street washing portion is contracted out. We had an agreement that we're trying to renew for the care of the plants with that process. We had an agreement with, I believe it was Hope Services, that helped us out for a bit with that. I think they ran into some challenges with that. Part of it, it's, I'm not as close to that as I used to be because Parks is not under my purview any longer. So I know that the process, but the actual nuts and bolts of which contracts happening, I'm not that familiar with. But looking at the assessment report, you know, it kind of identifies the different contractual items that are on there. I refer you to page three of the engineer's report for Calle P. You know, it's the matter of, you know, coordinator costs, administrative costs, material impacts and so forth. Calle P is zero. The sidewalk cleaning runs about $2,700 over the course of a year. You know, 74 cents for the footage. It doesn't add up to a lot of money very quickly, so it just has some really basic cleaning services at Calle P.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to stall out here.
Yeah, gotta give you a heads up before you do that.
Right.
So do I have time to go next door?
Sure.
Right, as long as it's food only and you share.
Yeah, I'll stay with the gang.
There you go. Oh, I missed that, so, okay.
One thing that I can point out, just as we're going through the process, is the city owns property in both of these districts and it's the city's responsibility as well to pay those fees as we do requests of our business owners as well. So where the parking garage, for example, on Calle P, we pay that fee for that frontage as well. We pay our fair share for that process and as we move forward. So there is no special treatment for the city.
Yeah, while she's tabulating those, if this is a protest hearing, so are we getting yes and no votes tabulated then, Steve?
Yeah, as she mentioned, we had 78% with the yes, so that means that 22% said no, that they referred not to and for this to pass or the majority protest, as you said, it's 50% plus one, so.
You know, I get that. So if someone, if people were yes, let's say you had 28% no's, but you didn't have 72% yes, you just had silence, it would still fail because only 28% of the people voted no, even if you didn't have yes votes. Do you follow me? Is that correct?
I follow you, but we can have the city attorney weigh in. But the way I understand it works is that basically we have to receive, we have to receive 50% plus one no votes. So even if only 28 and there were no responses for the others, because we didn't have a majority after casting a no vote, it would still pass. That's my understanding, but it could be. So even if you only got only no votes and we only had 22% of no votes, it would still pass because the silent portion, they didn't reach their threshold of 50% for defeat.
Exactly. Okay, right.
We all see some Jeopardy music.
There was a, at one of the schools where I taught, a lot of teachers have, elementary schools have signs and signals for their class to quiet down when they want them to. And one person had a train whistle, other people would raise two hands or one hand. And one did play the Jeopardy, played the Jeopardy tune and the kids all would hum along. And then when she was done and the music was over, all the kids were quiet and ready to get on to the next lesson.
One more interesting thing about the process, maybe not interesting, but it kills time, is that we've learned as we've gone through this process, we're trying to make it better and better. As you notice, Clementine is now counting pink ballots as opposed to the green ballots. That visually allows to separate Calle P versus Alvarado. In the past, when we had property owners on multiple properties, they would combine it into one envelope and it was a process to go through. So, you know, a little tweak was now the Calle P is pink and the green for Alvarado helps us out. So interesting factoid, perhaps.
And another interesting factoid, since we're on factoids, is that this year Clementine put on each of the envelopes, whether it's Calle P and Alvarado Street, so that we can, before we open the envelopes, we can actually sort which ones are from which district. So that's one of the reasons why you see all of these are pink. Yes.
I appreciate the abundance of knowledge that you are imparting on us about this.
I appreciate the abundance of knowledge that you are imparting on us about this process.
Oh, Karen. Karen, were you busy on your smartphone?
She's augmenting the discussion.
Oh, yes, she is.
There should be bonus points for coming up with these words that start with an A.
Yeah, don't you feel authenticated now?
Well, Alan, you give out a lot of As at this time of year, don't you?
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, good one.
Astonishing, amazing.
Who is that in the background?
I don't know.
You don't get a vote.
I'm not sure. I'm working hard.
Bobby should accompany us more often.
Yeah. Oh, good one.
How do you know I haven't been?
Ah.
Has she been attending anonymously?
Oh, Karen's breaking up points.
You just haven't been nearly as entertaining in the past meetings.
This is taking longer because the Cali P folks are just, just probably got their vote in just moments ago.
Well, I'm surprised how many votes there are because if you think about the frontage on Cali P, a big part of it is our parking garage, right?
There's 37 properties.
Yeah, then would the professional building be one vote or?
Yeah, it's broken down by the properties themselves and the individual owners and the frontages, like I said. So yeah, there's 37, yeah, there's 37 properties that get.
Properties and property owners, right?
Yes.
Renters don't get to vote it, sorry.
Yeah. In your memory, has this ever been voted down by any of the business districts? Normally, it's pretty pro forma, but I'm, you know, I'm sure maybe certain economic times it isn't. But I'm just curious if it's ever been voted down.
No, it's never even been close. Yeah, because what did she say? It started in 85, Alvarado? Yeah, I was there on council and I remember that, yeah.
Well, speaking of which, this one passed by 73.59%.
Okay. Good. And the other one was about 78%. Very good.
I think it was.
Chrissy, I think is muted.
No, all is good. I'm just slow getting to the table here. I was just going to clarify that silence does not equal consent. So that rule on majority protest changed with Prop 218. I was just busy confirming that. So I wanted to clarify that one.
Ah, so, okay, so if you, if people didn't vote yes and you had 28 no's, the no's would carry it?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So under this majority protest schemes, the owner of a majority of all the affected properties were required to submit a written protest. So that means that silence equals consent. And this means that a local agency could have an assessment where some property owners were opposed to the assessment as long as the majority of property owners did not feel so strongly about it that they filed a written protest. But now those property owners who are sufficiently interested, return their ballots, will control the outcome.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So then I think we're, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution in favor of the Cali Principale Maintenance District?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please. Clementine, are you ready?
Did I hear earlier that Ed, you are abstaining?
That's correct.
Okay. In that case, Councilmember Hafa?
Aye.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes.
All right. So it passes 4-0 with Councilmember Ed abstaining. Although you're not really a property owner, but thank you for that and keeping everything on the up and up. Okay, then next item is an informational report on a potential trans occupancy occupancy tax. I'll start off by saying that we've received a lot of emails and which are in the public record and it's been a really vigorous discussion out in the community. And where we had left this, the last meeting, we, again, by consensus, gave direction to our city staff to come back at this meeting, honing in what council direction. And so what we're going to see momentarily is a result of that consensus. And there, I think there was probably maybe reviewing it. I don't want to steal the staff's thunder, but we basically were looking at a 2% TOT increase hotel motel tax from 10 to 12%. We, I believe the consensus was a 2/3 vote and to include the neighborhood and community improvement program in that, unless I heard that incorrectly. You can clarify it to Hans when it's time to make the report. And which automatically would require a 2/3 approval because it becomes a special tax. It would not require a charter amendment or anything like that. It would be a simple ballot measure. And then it was consensus to also include online booking to make sure that online booking paid their fair share of the hotel motel tax as well. So I think that's where we left it. And as far as I can recall, the only thing that we thought we might want to discuss more was the possibility of phasing it over a period of time rather than over a one-year period. So I'll ask our city manager if I summarize that correctly and I believe that's what our consensus was.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this item has been in front of you quite a few times in the past, over the past, I believe, three council meetings. At one time or another, we have spoken about the TOT. Tonight, we will be presenting what we have heard the council say, what we have heard various stakeholders say, and also what we heard our neighborhood say. These are not by itself very much diverse opinions. It's more a matter of for us tonight to figure out what is the path forward. And of course, you have one fraction that may argue for one specific path forward. And of course, you have another fraction that we will represent as well that has recommended a second option going forward with respect to the transient occupancy tax. There's probably no easy way other than saying there is no right or wrong in going forward. It is a, it is a step, a measured step that council, we hope can advise us tonight whether the council would like to select option one or option two. Or maybe throughout the course of the night or the evening, you might develop together with us and the stakeholders an option three, if that is out there as well. So I just wanted to say tonight, this is a night where we hope as your staff that we get direction. We translated the direction that we received two weeks ago from you in the way as the mayor presented it. And tonight, it is basically up to you to give us final direction, what you want us to come back on July 29. That will be a special meeting next week, Wednesday. And we set it that up in a way that there is ample time for people to listen to each other. And at the end, again, like I wanted to state it again, at the end, there is no right or wrong. There is a path forward we all will agree upon because the objective, we all agree, which is ensure that the city of Monterey is fiscally sound, sustainable, and that we also can offer the services that our residents deserve. And with that, I hand it over to our finance director, who will go into the details of her, of our presentation. And there will be some updates reflecting the input we have received over the last two weeks. With that, Lauren, if you would, please take it away.
Great. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor and members of the public. Tonight, I'll brief everyone on the TOT and keep it at a high level, given that we've had several meetings already. And certainly, I want to spend some time on the ballot questions because that's really where the terms and conditions are of the proposed ballot measure and tax. So I'm going to share my screen. So what we're looking at tonight is a TOT ballot measure for the November 3 upcoming election. All documents would need to be submitted to the county clerk by August 7. We'll briefly summarize the direction we received from council last two weeks ago and then hopefully get direction from the council and more inputs from the public. Tonight, we'll talk about the TOT terms and then the ballot questions and then the differences between the two proposals that we have and certainly feedback that we've received from stakeholders. As the mayor summarized, we want to continue to have public engagements. That's really important, especially when we're talking about taxing our citizens. At the last meeting, we summarized key factors in the new tax. One is what is the rate of tax increase? Would we like to phase it in, meaning instead of 2% out the door, it might be 1%, 1% or some other derivative? And to what extent do we allocate 16% to our neighborhood and community-wide improvement project? And then the need to expand our online travel companies to ensure that the city is collecting all the revenues that is due to the city. Whether or not we consider a charter amendment, which does complicate the matter and would create more than one ballot measure. And then the key theme of keeping it simple for the new tax and then making sure that our constituents can understand and manage what we're presenting to them. So one very important stakeholder when it comes to TOT is our hospitality industry leaders and partners. We met with them on July 1 and they do advocate for a phase in of the new tax rate to give the industry an opportunity to recover with COVID. They are concerned about the impacts on tourism and the industry as a whole. In particular, it was voiced recently, their concern about the concurrent challenges with the conference center debt. In particular, to what extent the hotels had any liability. Last week, we were able to address this. We talked to our bond council. The bond council confirmed that the hotel's liability is really limited to their duties to collect the special tax and to remit that special tax. And so their duties are limited to that. So I want to read into the record for the hotels that are watching. They have the bond council confirm that each hotel's liability in respect to the bond is limited to the special tax. If they pay the special tax in full and that special tax is insufficient to pay the bond, there is no liability to the hotels. However, if the hotel fails to pay the special tax in full, however, the hotels may be foreclosed upon. So I think that's really, really important because they were concerned about a new or higher TOT plus the challenge of paying the debt on the conference center and what implications that might have for them. So I think everyone involved in researching this feels a bit of relief. Moving on, we also had a very important meeting with our Neighborhood Association president. The city of Monterey is so special and unique in its organized fashion relative to being able to reach our neighbors and get important inputs. So on July 13, we listened to them and there was a resounding consistent message. In particular, they do advocate for 2% TOT increase. And they really do feel that tourists need to pay for their fair share of city services such as police, fire, parks, trails, beach and other amenities that tourists enjoy. They also feel that a 2% TOT increase is comparable to others in Monterey County and our competing tourist destination. And we'll have two quick slides to go through that. They also express to do the 12% effective January 1, 2021 without a phase in. And also, it was really important to the neighbors that 16% go to NCIP for several reasons. One, that we unfunded a long list of projects and there is a need and a desire to restore funding for those projects. Two is they also recognize that should an emergency arise, the council has the authority to appropriate NCIP in the future and that flexibility enables us to be nimble when we need to with NCIP money. But it's very important, it was very apparent to the neighbors that this program remains important. Also, the neighbors expressed no sunset or expiration on this new TOT increase. So for those who hadn't been watching, let's talk about what we're talking about. Transient occupancy is the hotel tax paid by guests. We're proposing a 2% increase, moving the current rate from 10% to 12%. The discussion about impact on consumers or possibly industry could be looked at by comparing the TOT rate within the Monterey County and with our other competing destinations. So this slide shows that within the Monterey Bay jurisdictions, which includes the city and the county itself, of the 13 cities and counties, nine of them have higher TOTs than the city of Monterey. And the city itself is the lowest along the peninsula at 10%. Moving on, I think what's very important is we need to broaden our view of tourism and look at how this tax would compare to other competing jurisdictions. So this shows the other destinations that Monterey typically competes with when we look at NCCBV factors of other jurisdictions. And again, with this chart, it demonstrates that Monterey is still the lowest TOT. I also want to take a moment to recognize that hotels do charge other fees in addition to TOT. And this would really give us a comprehensive and complete view. Those charges include the conference center to pay for the debt of the restoration and the wonderful conference center as shown there. There's also a tourism improvement district of $1 to $2 per night. And then also the hotels themselves charge guests resort fee, property fee, Wi-Fi fee and parking fees, which could be upwards of $35 for some of these additional fees. So we're hoping that we have summarized what we understand from the July 7 meeting and also from some of the stakeholder meetings that we've had with the neighborhoods and the hotel leaders. We're presenting you two options. This summarizes the two options and the difference between the two, which is only the phase in. That's really the difference between the two options. And then I'll also read to you the ballot questions because we really are hoping that you can give us direction on the ballot question and so we can be prepared for July 29. So option one and two both propose a rate increase of 2%, moving it from 10 to 2%. Both would not require charter amendments, so it would only be one ballot measure on the ballot for November 3. Both also present 16% allocation to NCIP, making this a special tax. And making this a special tax, city of Monterey voters need to be aware that it will require 2/3 of voters to pass this. Do we want to phase in or not phase in the rate? So that's the distinction between option one and two. I think importantly is staff makes a recommendation and our recommendation is option two without the phase in because of the degree of the COVID-19 financial devastation to the city budget. And also because option two is much more reflective of the neighborhood president's input. With that, I'll go into option one. So option one is the 2% rate increase with a phase in and 16% to NCIP and 2/3 vote required. The phase in here is 1%, January 21, another 1% January 2022. So we are limited to 75 words. This ballot question has 74. It also has to meet some legislative forms, content. And so we have drafted this for your consideration to the best of our ability to make it compliant. So it reads, shall the measure be adopted to increase transient occupancy tax from 10% to 11% on the cost of hotel rooms paid by guests effective January 1, 2021 and 12% effective January 1, 2022, providing 1.4 million to 5.6 million annually, allocating 16% of the proceeds to the neighborhood and community improvement program and 84% to essential services such as parks, recreation, library and emergency preparedness and expanding the tax to online travel companies effective until repealed by voters. I want to call your attention to the fiscal impact in the phase in. In the fiscal impact in the phase in, 1% not taken in the first year is about 1.4 million. In option two, the question will read with the fiscal impact, it's starting at 2.8 million. So when we look at the two scenarios, I also want to highlight the fiscal impact that we have estimated, knowing what we know today. we have estimated, knowing what we know today. So let's now read question number two, which is a 2% rate increase, no phase-in, 16% going to NCIP, and a 2/3 vote requirement. The possible question we would ask our voter is, "Shall the measure be adopted to increase transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12% on the cost of hotel rooms paid by guests with 16% of proceeds allocated to the neighborhood and community improvement program and 84% allocated to other essential services such as parks, recreation, library, emergency preparedness, and other unrestricted expenditures and expanding the tax to apply to online tax companies, providing $2.8 million to $5.6 million annually effective until repealed by voters?" So in this one, the range begins with 2.8 and goes all the way up to 5.6. For those that have not been listening in on the prior couple of meetings, the reason for the large range also is that we're very hopeful with the recovery from COVID, this revenue will increase over time. But the 1% reduction in the phase-in concept would reduce revenues by about $1.4 million in year one. With that, I'd like to conclude to remind everyone that TOT is an essential revenue tool for the council and for the residents to consider. Without it, we would continue to have to make very drastic shifts in our service level in order to balance our budget in the upcoming years. The council direction that we're seeking tonight is whether or not we move forward on the July 29th to give us direction on the terms and conditions of the TOT and exactly the ballot question you'd like us to bring back on the 29th. With that, I want to remind the council that we will need four fists vote of the council tonight, or actually on the 29th, to put this before the voters and then the voters would have to approve it by 2/3 vote. With that, I'll turn it back to the city manager to see if he had any other remarks.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lauren. I think option one and two have been clearly defined and I think the starting points for both options are reflective of the discussions that we had so far and the input we have received from you, the city council. I want to conclude our presentation with a warning or a reminder that even with a possible TOT increase, even with that TOT increase, the city of Monterey will still need to continue to look at adjusting our service levels in the future. Having the TOT increase will make that hard look a little easier, but even with a 2% TOT increase, we are still going into fiscal times where we really have to look even post-COVID, edit our operation and balance what we can actually afford and what we actually should deliver as service level. So even with that, we, even with the TOT increase, we still have to do our homework internally. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation and we are ready to answer any question you may have.
Okay, thank you for that articulate presentation. And are there any questions? We'll save comments till after public comment. Any questions, any clarification on what we just heard? So well presented, anyone? Councilmember Ed, a question?
Yes, a question for Lauren or Hans. In either scenario, there is a citation of either 1.4 or 2.8 to 5.6 and we refer both measures to changing the way we are able to collect from travel agency companies, so online companies. So is that amount estimated in that range of dollars? And do we know enough about the online travel companies to give us an estimate of what that would mean for additional revenue? Or is it within that range cited here?
No, that is not included in that estimate. Frankly, we really would be speculating a lot to state what we are owed from the third-party travel organizations. What our numbers are reflecting are our best estimates as of today as well as last year's TOT of $29 million total. That makes the 5.8.
Okay, great. And one last question before we go to the public and/or other council members. On the 5.6, and I think you just alluded to it, on the estimate that's on the high side of 5.6 million, what's the base that you're using on your TOT? And I know we have partial numbers now in this year, we have numbers from last year that were amended greatly, but what is the amount of TOT you're basing to get to the numbers of 2.8 to 5.6? In other words, do you start with 20 million, 22 million? What's the base number we're using?
So the 5.8 comes from a previous record-setting year of TOT at $29 million. And the $1.4 million is basically our bleak estimate of a COVID-19 TOT year. So that hopefully answers that question.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Other council questions at this point? All right, then, let's, Nat, how are we looking, please, on our queue? And we're going to welcome public comment.
That's right, we do have quite a few callers who've called in and I'll go ahead and start the timer. Bear with me just one moment while I get the timer set up here and we'll take our first public comment and that is Laura Pratt. Hi Laura, thanks for joining.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, okay. So, this is Laura Pratt, calling as a citizen. And I have been asking council for over 10 years to raise the TOT. It has not been raised in 37 years. And instead of 2%, I recommend a 4% increase to be more in line with more of our competing destinations and other municipalities that were not shown on the slide. I also want to remind the citizens that this is a tax on the visitors and not the hotels themselves and not on our citizens. And it is right that, as the neighborhood president said, that they do pay their fair share of our city services, that they do. I also recommend that there is no sunset. I also recommend no phase-in. And the NCIP, I think, is at a fine level the way it is at getting 16% of the current 10% rate. Also, I would like to see that in the future that we put something together where the TOT is raised perhaps 1% every five to 10 years to keep it in line so that it doesn't go another 37 years without an increase. And last but not least, I would like to address something that keeps coming up at the council meetings where some of the council members have mentioned a deal that was given to the hoteliers when the CCFC was passed, that we would not raise the TOT if they would commit to the CCFC. And as far as I know, and I know quite a bit about that process because I worked at the conference center for all those years, there is no such deal, at least no official deal. Now, if there was some kind of backroom handshake base, that's different, but I do not believe there was ever any actual resolution or ordinance or anything of that nature that stated that the hoteliers would not have any kind of increase on the TOT while they paid off the CCFC. Those are two completely separate things and by the way, they're both pass-throughs. Even with the CCFC, the hoteliers do not pay that. The visitors pay it to the hoteliers and then the hoteliers pass it on to the city. So with that, I would just like to encourage that you raise it not 2% but 4%, that there is no sunset, that it is a pass-through, it hasn't been done in 37 years, and it's way overdue as I've been saying for at least 10 years now. Thank you very much.
Thanks Laura. Our next caller is Jerome. Hi there, you're live with the Monterey City Council.
Who is this?
Yes, hi, you are live with the Monterey City Council.
This is Jerome Harrison. Hello?
Yep, we hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, this is Jerome Harrison, the Chair of the MCHA. I'm going to read into the record a letter from October 9th, 2013, that states the following, and this was signed by the Chair, Steve McLaury. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, Over the past three years, representatives of the Monterey County Hospitality Association have partied with the Conference Center staff and the MCCV to determine the best possible solution for the conference center renovation. Through independent studies and vital consultants and listening to our meeting plans, customer advisory board has concluded that the best solution for the renovation of the conference center is to move forward with the preferred alternative plan, which MCHA fully supports. If this, the MCHA believes that, number one, the MCC must be updated to the degree identified by the preferred alternative solution because it creates flexibility in meeting room space. Our meeting planners expect a need for hosting large groups or multiple floor groups. Our current design does not allow for more than one group at the time of a certified set. Two, the fully provided by the City of Monterey partnership with the county and other municipalities to the Monterey County Convention Center and Business Bureau must remain at its current level to properly market the conference center and ensure the future success of the new conference center and destination. Three, the conference center funding district, which is the CCFD process, is viable as the funding mechanism for the renovating conference center specifically, the preferred alternative established in the motion made by Councilwoman Libby Downey in April. Current and future city council will not look at a TOT increase or other assessments of the hotel industry until the conference center debt obligation is retired. The ultimate success of our hospitality industry is a better group business. Experience of conference center at the year, it helps secure future functions business if frequently brings back return leisure visitors for a necessity to enjoy a destination with friends and family members. The hotel community is investing in our future by stepping forward with the funding for this extremely important project. The partnership between the city and our MCCV funding is critical as we achieve our market, our new state-of-the-art facility along with ongoing destination market. Business Monterey has always been a world-class business destination. It must continue to have its conference center organized as a tourist-class facility. The conference center is a critical part of our economy and the international representation to establish once again as a community driver to support city of Monterey. The tourism industry is the number one industry for the city and it's critical for the vitality of Monterey in numerous ways. MCHA is very close with city of Monterey, probably a private partnership to see renovation of the conference center to become a reality. As you know, when I have 27 seconds left, we have collected over $264 million NCIP with $42 million. The fiscal health of Monterey depends on TOT. If we're looking at a 1% bonus tourist spending, which is $467,000 NCIP, I should bet when you see something that is...
I'm sorry, I really do hate to cut you off.
...children and their children allow, or did you do what you say?
So...
No more of this work.
Thank you, thank you for calling in and I'm sorry, we have to keep the meeting going and as we've shared with everyone who submitted feedback, we do include and publicize all of the written feedback, including official letters into the public record, which is available at monterey.org/citysubmittedcomments as well. So I really hate cutting speakers off, but we do have other representatives from MCHA who could speak, including our next caller, who is Rick Aldinger. Hi Rick.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council staff. My name is Rick Aldinger. I am a resident of the city of Monterey and I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Monterey County Hospitality Association. And, you know, I want to make it clear that I personally value city services, value of the library, sports center. And I just want to point out that the OT revenue to the city has grown steadily for many years without an actual tax increase, tax rate increase. Per room revenue is a big part of this. Average daily rate has grown through years. Because of this, operators have been able to take advantage of that increased revenue to continually upgrade and renovate their properties, making them competitive and able to garner, yes, higher daily rates. To remain competitive, particularly in group business, a higher TOT will almost certainly mean that operators will find it necessary to offer a lower room rate than they might otherwise have. One consequence of the lower room rate will be less capital for those renovations and upgrades I spoke about, which also reduces the ability to further increase rates. Long-term, TOT revenues will suffer because of this. And I said that the last thing I'll say again, a TOT increase, particularly during a recovery, is a bad idea. A phase-in approach would at least help. And I do want to mention, I have some concerns about the online travel company component of this whole conversation. I'm not sure how that's going to be administered. I can see that being a huge burden on the local operators at a minimum and also depending on how it's administered, local operators could end up being on the hook for a portion of that money. The question being, who is responsible for collecting that money? Is it going to be the local operators or is the city themselves going to deal with the online travel companies to actually escape those revenues? That's what I have. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thanks, Rick. Our next caller is Susan Nine. Hi Susan, thanks for joining.
Hi Nat, good evening. I would like to thank Lauren for the excellent presentation. I am president of the Montevista Neighborhood Association and attended the meeting. And that is an excellent summary of the consensus of everyone. It wasn't even a consensus, it was like we were speaking with one mind. And so I urge you to adopt option two that's been presented. I would like to point out that I believe in the pain that was up for option two. It states at the top that that requires a 2/3 majority as well, which I don't believe is accurate. I believe it's a simple majority, but maybe Lauren can clarify that. I would also like to point out that how important it will be to educate people and voters generally, that this is neither a tax on hotels nor is it on residents and that it is in line with other California tourist destinations such as Monterey, which are heavily impacted, particularly small cities like Monterey by the, what some people consider over tourism, but it's certainly a popular destination. And I travel widely and have all my life and I have never once even thought to ask what the TOT taxes before choosing a tourist destination. I don't think this will have any negative effect. I think if the hotel industry does feel that they need to lower room rates, they certainly have options to look at such as the resort fees, internet charges, and parking charges that do actually affect my choice of which hotels I stay in. I would like to point out that Monterey is vital, maintaining a healthy, vital economy in Monterey is vital for the hotels. Without the draw of our lovely community, there would be no large-scale hotels profiting from this. And I would very much urge you to take advantage of one of the few options we have right we have right now to try to bring back the city from the brink, like all local governments are facing right now from the pandemic. This is a very nominal and reasonable and it's long overdue increase and I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thanks Susan. Our next caller is Kevin Deaton. Hi Kevin, how are you doing? Can you hear us?
Yes, Kevin Deaton calling Government Affairs Committee on the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. We have not made a decision yet on what position to take about this tax increase. The Government Affairs Committee is going to meet next Monday to discuss it, but I can tell you some things that will surely be discussed. First, obviously, at this point, this tax is targeted at an industry that's done, that's down right now for talent. And you know, some people might say, well, it's just a 2% increase and nobody really pays attention to it anyway. But you know, the thing about taxes is they keep weight over different ways and you never know, somebody has to pay this money at the end. So the question is, will it end up impacting revenue in general? Will it affect businesses? Will people make decisions regarding this if it's cumulative with other things? You don't really know for sure. Another thing that will be discussed is, has the city exhausted all its options in terms of tax increases and spending cuts? And I can tell you right now, we've got Monterey Pits on College looking at a bond measure. We've got Monterey Peninsula Unified School District looking at a possible workforce housing bond measure. We have the proposition that would repeal some of the tax restraints on larger properties. There's going to be a lot of tax increases on the fall ballot. And I'm not sure at what point some of the voters are going to say, oh, we don't know, we're in tough times. And I guess the reward for this is getting a lot of tax increases. So keep in mind here, you know, somebody will say, oh, it's just 2%. We're just keeping competitive with others. But you have to look at it in the larger context. So we will discuss this, decide what to do and you'll hear a formal position if there is one. Take it next week. In the meantime, I'm taking notes on this and other chamber members are watching and we will see what happens with it. Thank you.
Thanks Kevin. Our next caller is Mark Watson and Mark, I understand that you have some graphics that you'd like us to share on the screen.
Well, yeah, I can't share my screen, I don't think, but I did send in a couple of documents. If you're able to put them up while I'm speaking, that would be great.
Yep, we can.
The first one would be the graph.
Okay, here we go.
So the graph would be first for my first point? Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Watson and I'm the Treasurer for the Monterey County Hospitality Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the proposed TOT increase. I would like to make two simple points. First, tax revenues generate about 90% of the general revenues for the city. These core tax revenues include transient occupancy tax, property tax, sales tax and other taxes. In 2006, prior to the recession, TOT revenues already represented 40% of the core tax revenues for the city of Monterey. In 2019, last year, TOT's share of the core revenues reached an all-time high, representing 53% of all core tax revenues. So from 40% before the recession to 53% last year. This has the hospitality community wondering why it is being asked to pay even more, especially given the hotels stepped up and paid for the conference center. For my second point, which would be the next image, I want to illustrate the simple terms of what an increase would really look like for the Monterey hotel industry. The idea that it's just simply a pass-through is not true. The city's own annual budget forecasts that hotel revenues will increase by 4% annually. So according to that, if the city is going to raise the tax by 2%, that's 50% of the increase that visitors are willing to pay. So what that means is that the hotels would lose 50% of all future increased revenue.
You've got a minute left, just a quick reminder.
So. Remember, these sobering numbers do not even consider the crisis situation the industry is in today with the COVID-19 pandemic and the long-term recovery that will be required. It's not hard to imagine that this TOT increase, which on its face takes 50% of all future increases in hotel revenue, is especially punishing at this crucial time for our industry and will surely have significant negative results. So again, it's a 4% annual increase according to the city's budget. If the city raises the tax 2%, that's 50% of all future revenues that the hotels would normally earn. So, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for that and couldn't share both your presentation as well as the timer. So I wanted to give you the one-minute marker warning there, Mark. Thanks. Our next caller is Rick Boyer. Hi Rick.
Hi, Rick Boyer. I'm President of Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association. I'd like to start by giving accolades to the city staff for finally following the city charter and the requirements for the two-thirds vote. And for the previous speaker, two-thirds is required for both of the options because both have 16% of it being dedicated to NIP. I think much either way, either option is much cleaner. It follows the charter and the will of the voters when the charter measure was put in creating NCIP. And yes, Clyde, I said NCIP just for your benefit. And also the state requirements for two-thirds vote. I think either way, as far as whether or not taxpayers support it or not, we have not yet taken a position. But you've come a long way by following state law and following the charter. The one concern that is still outstanding, which I don't know how you'll be able to deal with it and I don't know if you can, is five or 10 years from now, hopefully it's less than five, when we're past this pandemic and revenues begin to return to normal. My hope is that these funds go to different funds to repair the facilities that you've been woefully putting money into over time and not to increase salaries and all the rest. We're taking it on face value that that will happen. The Taxpayers Association, we had already, when we supported the sales tax increase, we indicated very much that it was time to start reforming aspects of the city, getting salaries and benefits in line. And you all need to start working with other cities to start getting the pension system in the state in line because the last thing we want to be is five or seven years right back here again, out of funds because we didn't reform the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Our next caller is Esther Malkin. Esther?
Good evening again. Wow, you guys, I don't know about you, but I'm frankly tired of hearing the same exact argument and comment. Time after time, and this conversation has been going on since October 1st, when Susan Nine and I were the only two residents that sat in the conference center with all of you guys and your executive staff discussing for the first time the $2 million budget that we were looking at at the time. I mean, at this point, I can't imagine you guys have heard anything new being said tonight and you've made your minds up to just have at it already. Decide and then ultimately the voters will decide. No matter how much we keep rehashing and repeating the same arguments and the same conversations and the same threats and all the foreboding, you know, comments about how hospitality is going to just do so much worse than they have, you know, since COVID and all of that, just move on already. Take it to the voters and the voters will come out and vote and decide what needs to be done. And whether you have more voters in the area or that are business-friendly or voters that are going to be more residential-friendly will determine what you guys are going to do ultimately at the end of the day. So, thanks for taking the time and not falling asleep to all of our comments so many times, over and over and over. Because I know I'm pretty tired of hearing them myself. I'm sure you guys hear a lot more than I do. Thanks.
Thanks Esther. Our next caller, and just a reminder for those who are calling in, please dial star five to raise your hand. Our next caller is going to be Kurt Tipton. Hi Kurt.
Hello?
Hi. Yep, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Hi, this is Kurt Tipton. I'm President of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Thank you for taking my call. I want to thank the city staff for doing an excellent job of summarizing the president's meeting and also Lauren for her presentation. I just wanted to point out, in the Downtown Neighborhood Association, of course, we all agreed that this GOP was absolutely necessary, but there was some discussion that perhaps it should be 3% or 4% rather than 2. And the other discussion we had is, if we don't pass this, then will Monterey still be a tourist destination? The city has to maintain the facilities and the infrastructure in order to have this as a destination. And I hope the hoteliers realize this and that that is absolutely necessary to make this a world-class destination. And that was the only comment I had. Thank you.
Thank you Kurt. And our next comment comes from James McIntosh. Hi James.
Hi there, this is James McIntosh again. I'll speak very quickly. As for online travel and garnishing the money from them, Airbnb is very, very good about making those kinds of arrangements and you will have no problem. Furthermore, Monterey is a world-class tourist destination. We are not an economy-class tourist destination. People do not come to Monterey to debate whether or not they're going to spend the extra $5 on a hotel room that's already upwards of $500. The problem that you're citing does not exist. It is a position taken by the hoteliers so that they can maintain low prices. Reality of their clientele is that these are for richest people in the world coming to the most beautiful destination in the world. I propose that we go with option two because it immediately generates revenue. Option one is not, it's not even addressing the problem. It's maintaining the hotel's ability to continue garnishing the majority of their funds, keeping their prices low and enabling them to compete with the other hotels in the market. I saw that graph that you showed. It's very clear that a person could stay in Seaside and save a lot more money. But the reality is people come to Monterey because it is Monterey, because it is not Marina, because it is not Seaside. People are coming here to spend money. They come here with their pockets full, wanting to spend money. We have many independent shops in Monterey that you can find nowhere else in the world. And they do well and continue to exist here because people from all over the world come to spend their money in Monterey. Acting as if a 5% increase is going to somehow slow or stop that and hasten it and a position by the hoteliers to maintain dominance. Thirdly, this recession that we're speaking of will not affect the clientele of luxury hotels like those found in Monterey, nor will it impede their desire to stay. In fact, during pandemics, the rich often go to destinations where they can wait it out. The tax increase does not affect residents, it affects businesses, which is why we have so many business leaders, businesses.
All right, James, thanks. Thank you for your, yep, thanks for your time. Appreciate you as well as others for calling in tonight. And Mr. Mayor, it sounds like based on our dashboard here, there are, of course, which board, no other public members who've called in to speak on this item.
Okay, very good. I would suggest with the council's approval, can we take a, let's take about a 10-minute break, then we'll come back. So it's 8:32. So let's be back at 8:42 in 10 minutes and then we'll pick up where we left off. Okay, so we'll take a brief recess, everyone. Thank you. So let's go. We'll reconvene in five, four, three, two, one, and welcome back. So as always, we appreciate the public comment. And I think the discussion in front of us there is basically a decision of, as outlined by our staff, unless you see it differently, and that is option one versus option two. Then secondly was the ballot language. Lauren asked if there was any input or changes and so on. I would ask Lauren or Hans, is that at 75 words already?
Yes, I think one was 74 words and the other one was exactly 75.
Okay, that's always fun. I have a comment on that, but why don't we wait and decide? Shall we discuss option one versus option two? Is, I think, okay. Anyone want to start?
Yeah, may I? May I start, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, and I think I last council meeting brought it down to all of the things that we see before us in option one and option two, with the exception of phased-in versus all at once 2%. So for me, that really is the decision. I'm in agreement with everything else and want to raise a few points on the phased-in approach. I wish we, I wish we had done this different way years ago, but for a variety of reasons, it wasn't the right time. And there's so many moving parts with doing what we do and establishing policy. And I can really appreciate all the comments from those that called in, the comments from those that have sent in emails, and especially for those that participated in the outreach conversations that Lauren and Hans mentioned before. So really appreciate this. I think I stated last time we met when we were bringing this down to decision points that I would prefer a phased-in approach. I've been thinking a lot about that. I think a lot about the presentation tonight in terms of what that means. I'm recognizing that we are in a very strange time for hospitality and we're all very concerned about group and conferences coming back. And that is a big unknown because obviously with COVID looming, we really don't know when that all will start. But if I clear all of that out and say it's neutral territory and COVID is not part of the equation, I have to ask myself, then what's the right decision that represents the community that also takes care of the revenue that I think that it's time that we do 2%? However, I am in favor of a 1% and then follow on a year later a 1%. Because we do have COVID hanging over us and because we have challenges in the marketing piece, I am very concerned about overloading the ability for response to the marketing and group and conference. So I do tend to lean that way for phased-in approach. I'm looking forward to hearing from the other council members and the city manager to dissuade me from that. But my preference is phased-in for over two years to give the hospitality conference group business a clear path to see that they can recover and get to the top dollars for TOT because top dollars from TOT is what benefits the community. And as many callers mentioned, we are a world-class destination. We want to maintain that. I'm not an expert in the marketing. I don't know for a fact, I can't point to a data point that tells me if it's 2% all at once, it impacts the TOT revenue and we get less conferences. But I have to rely on those that are in the business. They are the experts. They don't own the hotels, but they're tasked with operating the hotels and bringing in conferences and group sales that does benefit the city. So I have to lean on the input that I've gotten and the data that's been put in front of me. And that's, that's kind of the way I'm leaning is a 1%, 1% phased-in approach. But I want to hear everybody else.
Okay, good. Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll just jump in. I'll use an example. I'm going to maybe look at it a little bit differently than you and ask the question, would a 2% non-phased approach, would that be harmful to the industry? So just taking a $200 room, so 1% is $2. That might get you, that won't even get you a cappuccino. It will get you house coffee.
To go.
Yeah. Then if you want 2%, that's $4. That will barely pay for a cappuccino. So I'm looking at a phased approach and thinking, obviously, will a visitor make a decision on the hotel motel tax? Will $2 versus $4 really make a difference? And as a consumer, I don't think it would make any difference to me. If it were large money, if it's another $50, another $100, I think a phased approach would make sense. But I really think the numbers are so inconsequential that I don't see the negative impact at all on the hotel industry. I said, it's your cappuccino versus your house coffee. And I don't see it as a real, a significant obstacle to hospitality. So that's the way I look at.
Yeah. And I want to, I want to feedback and say, I totally agree with your analogy. If it's leisure travel and if it's group sales, then I think that's where, if I do the numbers of a, you know, a travel group that's coming and putting people in the three hotels downtown close to the conference center, and they're selling 1,000 rooms for a three-day experience, then we know the dollars of $300 a night room is greater numbers. So does that dissuade the group that's, or the group organizer that's shopping between different locations? And that's where then I turn to what's the comstat? What's the list of the competition showing us? And, and it looked like to me that we were only, even with San Diego and everybody else, we were behind. So then that leans me back towards who are we in competition with if they're already at 12% and we would go to 12%? So I think the comstat list is important to evaluate, but I think in leisure travel, it doesn't make a difference. I think they come no matter what. It's the group conference that I'm concerned that might inhibit a quick response.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And so other council members, what are your thoughts? I think we're focused on to phase or not to phase. That is the question. Anyone else?
Okay, I guess I'll go.
Councilmember Dan, what do you think?
Thanks. You know, over the last couple of weeks, I've, both sides have presented some pretty excellent arguments. And I'm not going to repeat them because like one speaker said, I think we've heard it now for the last six months. And maybe, maybe the lesson learned is that whenever we agreed to the CCFD, maybe we should have got that agreement in writing. I wasn't there, obviously. And, and I'm not sure how that happened. And maybe if the agreement was that we, we weren't going to raise the TOT, maybe that the time the council couldn't agree on that. And that's why it's not in writing. I don't know. I wasn't there. But bottom line is that for me, it's our responsibility as, as council members to make sure this city is solvent. And, and right now we're not. And these are just like unpresent, they're crazy times. And I think that we, we as, as representatives of our, our city need to make sure that, that our city goes forward financially. The thing that, that kind of moved me to option two is that when the staff brought on about the possible decrease in, in revenue of 1.4 minimum to 2.8 maximum in 2020, 2021 fiscal year, that kind of got me a little bit on my fiscal side of, of way I, I think. And 1.4 million is, is a lot of money that would help our reestablish our own city services, which that's what we promised a couple of meetings ago, that that's the first thing we try to bring back. And I think it goes a long way that if we don't accept the 1.4 at the 2%, then, you know, I just think that I'm not doing my job, unfortunately. I feel for the hospitality industry and I think they know that. It's just very difficult for me as a fiscally responsible person to turn down 1.4 million, or at least that's the money that I have. So I say, I'm leaning more towards option two and, and put it on the ballot and let the people decide, as one speaker said. That's my comments.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dan.
Just to kind of, I would like to get to some other topics in regards to the, to the measure in general, but for this bit of it, I'm okay with going with option two.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Allen?
Um, so I got a few things to say. I was here and gosh, I think it might have been 2014 when we passed the CCFD for remodeling the conference center. And, and there were verbal statements from council members that we acknowledge that that, especially for the big hotels, a 4%, 4.15%, that's a significant, that's a significant tax on, on, on their clients. And we didn't want to overtax them to the point that it would disincentivize people to come here and lead to less revenue for them and for us. But it was not legally binding. So Laura Pratt, you know, there was a, there, it wasn't a backroom deal. It was in public comments that council members said that. But it was not legally binding. And I, and Dan, part of the reason was, and I'm, I'm just going back in my mind, but I think part of the reason we didn't put that into any kind of a formal written thing was we didn't want to bind future councils because you don't know what's going to happen in the future. And, and here we are. So Kurt Tipton and Laura Pratt talked about a 3% to 4%. And I would say I, I think that would be, that would be too much and that there does come a point where you are making your fees so high that people do start to look elsewhere. So I don't think that would be a good idea. Rick talked about, Rick Hoyer talked about us, you know, maintaining the funding for the NCIP and respecting the charter and keeping it simple. And I'm glad we're going to do that. I do want to point something out to our hospitality friends, which is that as I look at the hits to our budget, I think, and I could be wrong on these exact numbers, but I think that the layoffs of employees was somewhere around a $6 million hit. And the concessions that employees came up was, you know, like out of their pockets was maybe another $680,000. And then the neighborhoods, you know, by us reallocating NCIP, that's like 3 to 4 million a year. So I feel like our neighborhoods and our employees have made a lot of sacrifices. And I know this is going to be a difficult thing for our hospitality partners, but I think, I think it But I think, I think it is the right thing. And if we, originally I was thinking about staggering it, phasing it, again, because I didn't want to put a greater burden on the hospitality partners in this year. But I realistically, I don't think people that are coming here are going to look at that additional 1% and that's going to be the major decisive factor. And as somebody who's organized events, you do look at a variety of different costs when you're negotiating with the hotels or the conference centers for your events. But most of the time, you don't actually look that carefully, in my experience, at hotel rates because those are paid for by the individual people. So I don't know. I, I, I am sympathetic to everybody's concerns. I would really like to have Ed join this, this vote. I would rather it not be a four to one vote. So I'd like to hear from Ed because I think it would just be a stronger message if it's a five all vote. And so it's important for me to hear from Ed. But I am leaning towards doing the 2% right away after hearing the public comment.
Okay. So I think please four of us have indicated option two. Ed?
So, so Alan, I understand you want me to give away what my future vote will be before I vote. So I don't know that I can add anything else to my prior comments, but I would just say the phased-in approach feels like it's the fair piece. And, and how do you ever describe what's fair? I want to just say that if it's 1%, we lose 1.4 million on the one year and then we make it up as it gradually goes back up to the two. So it's, by doing 1%, it's not a total loss. It's, it's a 1.4 on paper and that's a lot of money. What weighs me to the decision is what's our competition doing? And I look at the competition and they're already at 12. What, I'm going to commit. I think that's what you're all kind of looking for because I think a unanimous vote is appropriate for this. And we're going to get there. Bear with me. I think Esther said it best, let's get on with it and let the people decide. But we do have some mechanics to go through and that's, we still want to hear what else Tyler's going to say because I think he indicated he wants to get into some more details. But we have to wordsmith this a little bit and all agree. And then we're going to come back the 29th and then finalize it and then it moves to the county. So we do have some mechanics for this decision. I want to say whenever parties have different perspectives, it does not mean that you are lacking respect or lacking care and concern over both of these perspectives. Wherever, whichever camp folks are weighing in on, whether it's no increase at all, or 1% or 2% altogether, I think everybody has the community in mind that the Monterey city community residents and businesses are trying to protect themselves because we care about our city. And it does not mean one party in that different perspective is wrong. It means that we have to figure out how we come up with the, the right vote tonight, which is policy as we move forward. And then we get out of the way and then there's going to be some advocacy either way. And our voters will make the decision of where they sit. So it sounds like I would be the only one to vote for phased in. I'm going to join in with the majority and go with 2% because I care more about making sure that the voters vote for it, that the voters are clearly convinced on the education side and that we don't have any entanglements and miss out on a two-thirds vote. And as I said before, any tax measure that I've ever voted for, I've always wanted it to be a two-thirds vote. And I concur with this one tonight, that 2%, all 16% goes to NCIP, as well as we all want to work and commit to making sure that this passes. So I'm going to advance forward and commit my future vote to say, I'll go with 2%.
I just want to say, yeah, I really appreciate you looking at the big picture. And even if you didn't, I would still have a great, great respect for your evaluation of this. And I know it's heartfelt.
I appreciate that. And we, we have too many things at stake to waiver on anything when it comes down to leadership and doing the right thing. We've listened to a lot of folks, different perspectives, really appreciate everybody's earnest commitment to getting us the information. But it's time to make the decision. So I'm going to go that way.
Thank you. That very, very meaningful discussion. I think we all feel that way about the respect we have for each other. On the, I think that gives enough direction to our city staff on option one and two. The second thing they've asked for is wording, more or less on what the ballot statement should say. And hearing over the years, and Rick Hoyer addressed it this evening. And hey, Rick, you owe me a cup of coffee. So he knows what that means. But the, the wording in the, the potential balance statement, I'm comfortable with, but it's missing, I think, a big ingredient. And that is, we absolutely and positively have to maintain and renewal, excuse me, maintain and renew our city buildings. Looking back at the sports center, when we, I first introduced that concept in the mid 80s, I believe it was built in 1991. Took a while. But at the time, it would have been very good for us to set up a renewal and maintenance surcharge. So, and likewise with the use of any of our buildings, the conference center. You look at our library and our place and fire departments. Many of our buildings were built almost 60 years ago. And we also have the parking garages. We have a lot of older buildings. We've, I think they're in okay shape. But going forward, I think we should make it clear to the voters in the statement that potential new money will go towards maintenance and renewal of city buildings.
I completely agree with that. I don't know how we wordsmith that in, but I do believe that is an important element.
Thank you. I have confidence that Lauren can squeeze that in and drop an "and" here and an "although" there and she'll fit it in.
Yeah.
Chrissy, did you want to weigh in?
Quick question. And would this be another special tax component? Where it's, it's mandatory or?
No, it would be such as, as such as.
Okay, so it's just another one of the general fund services. You're not suggesting to have another component of a special tax for building maintenance or something like that?
Thank you, no. But we're, in, in the statement, which I'll take a quick look here. And it talks about 84% allocated to other essential services such as parks, recreation, library, emergency preparedness and other unrestricted expenditures such as renewal and maintenance of city buildings. I think that makes it clear.
Lauren, since you're, you're starting to, to take notes to fill in, I want to go, but he just said it, so I don't want to miss it. After 84% allocated, I think you can drop the other allocated to. And, and then it, it goes right into the essential services. So I think there's a word or two here and there that would enable you to get the facilities maintenance in somewhere.
So if we want to actually say renewal and maintenance of city buildings, that's one, two, three, four, five, six words. If we could bring that phrase down to three words, then it's a lot cleaner and it, it makes the ballot question tight. I'm confident in this group because I heard like 100 A letter words this evening. So do this exercise, I'm very confident.
How about city facility maintenance?
I like that, but I'm going to ask the mayor if he feels maintenance is not like renewal. Are we okay with city building maintenance? Because that's three words.
Sure. You could even say renewal. You know what? I would leave that to you to work on the wording. As long as the concept is, and it probably makes it more of a general tax or, or so we know the 84% is, it goes to general, general fund, to, to work on whatever wording that, that makes sense. But I, we, we've kicked that can down the road for so long. And I can't imagine where, why we, again, we're using money we don't have yet. But should we get it? We've got to be serious about our buildings.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think the operational word is building renewal or facility renewal. Building maintenance is, is not, I, I think is, is, is important as well. But I think what is, has a higher priority, facility renewal.
Yeah, I agree. And you're right, because we, we are maintaining our buildings. What we're not doing is investing in renewal.
Exactly. Yeah, we are hurting in facility renewal, not facility maintenance.
Got it. Okay, good. Councilmember Dan, are you going to jump in and wordsmith with us?
Actually, I forgot what I was going to say, sorry. Or I forgot the word, never mind.
Okay, are we comfortable pretty much with the rest of the statement then? Any other suggestions?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask Chrissy a question about one phrase that's in here. If Chrissy is available to weigh in, I think it's a quick, a quick legal, legal response. So is, is the language on the cost of hotel rooms paid by guests, does that need to be worked on so that we know that we're talking about all guests? So the expanding the tax to apply to online travel companies and all gas, guests, I just get a sense that I'm fearful that, fearful is the wrong word, cautious that there will be a legal challenge to anything that we have in this as it's going to pertain to the travel companies. So obviously you're going to go through this and you're going to make sure that that's going to be winnable in the future. But are we including everything that will ensure that we will be able to capture the travel and outside agencies that collect our TOT and keep it for themselves?
Right. Maybe I can just go into the history here a little bit. So what we've proposed to do is to change the definition of operator. And you can see that on your packet page 95. And that would include online travel companies. So what happened in the past is San Diego's ordinance is very similar to our existing ordinance. And there were, there was litigation. And the end of that litigation, the court determined that because San Diego's ordinance did not identify online travel companies as operators, they couldn't collect the transient occupancy tax from them. So what happens is hotels have been paying the occupancy taxes based on the amount they received for their rooms, not the higher price paid by consumers to the travel firms. And so industry officials say online travel companies typically markup the wholesale price anywhere between 8 to 22%, although I don't know that there's a standard for it. And so local governments, in order to recover this tax, have been amending their, their ordinances to include online travel companies in the definition of an operator. So the city will be able to go after and collect the tax from the online travel companies directly in the same fashion as any hotel in our town.
Yeah, and, and I just want to emphasize, and I know all of you on the council would say that that is a very high priority. And we have talked about it for several years as that was going through litigation. So that we finally arrived to be able to correct this piece to be able to capture what is our, our money. And that could be a substantial amount that adds to our collection and TOT. But I just, I, I was writing some notes today and just thought about the word all guests. So I'll leave it for you and Lauren as you wordsmith this. But just want to make sure that we, we can beat the legal challenges that we're sure to have come.
Great. I did have another request, if you don't mind. We are limited to 75 words and we are required to include certain elements such as the word specifically, shall the measure be adopted? We have no flexibility with that. We have to identify the special tax and what it's going for. We have to identify the estimated amount of the revenue, which we've done. And we have to put in the duration. And so here it'll be effective until repealed by the voters. So that doesn't give us a ton of wiggle room with wordsmithing. And so if words need to go, for example, would you, would the council care to discuss? Like, would you prefer to eliminate emergency preparedness over building facilities and the other words that we're talking about? Like, is there any sort of hierarchy or ranking that you could give us that we can really try to work with the language here and meet your objectives?
Chrissy, if I could, if I could offer, I think you've got them all right, plus the one that we talked about that Clyde offered, the facilities renewal. I think it's important. Words like essential services, I don't know if essential needs to be there. I think it's services. I think the voter gets that. So legally, legally, if essential, it could be removed. I think that it should go.
Right.
Service, services says it. I think emergency preparedness for me is a little confusing. Emergency services is probably, or public safety. But preparedness, I think, is something completely different. But it's two words, so we're not swapping anything out. But I think not using services, including, instead of such as, would make it one word instead of two.
Can we use screen right now with console?
It's, it's a little small, I can't see it.
Okay. Try to make it bigger.
Chrissy, I just wanted to ask legally, is there a distinction between including versus such as in the ballot question?
We can, we can look at it, but I think the word such as, we're, we're trying to move away from the appearance that this is somehow a special tax going to parks, recreation, library, because it doesn't necessarily mean that it will do that. And so such as is less specific than including. Because normally we would say including, but not limited to.
So this, this right now is a 73-word version. And if we replace including with such as, library, recreation, park, library, what, what does make sense then anymore if we're taking, if we replace including?
Yeah, I think it was previous to that, Hans, where it says essential services such as, replacing the word such as with the word including at, gives us one word. But I think we're saying, let's leave that the way it is.
How about that? That's 75 words.
No, no. Either. Such as before the parks. So just the facilities renewal is, is part of the same concept as parks, rec, library, facilities renewal. So you just need a comma there. My question is, instead of saying transient occupancy tax, which is three words, and a lot of people won't know what that means, to be quite honest, can we say hotel tax? Or does it, is this such a legally defined concept that it really has to be transient occupancy tax?
It, it would be recommended to keep it transient occupancy tax because, for example, it doesn't just apply to hotels. It could be the, the online travel companies, like we said, booking agents. Someday, if in the future, short-term rentals are legalized for some reason in our city, it would apply to those. So we're, it's broader than just hotels. But, but I will revisit this before the, the next meeting.
So the yellow bit, in my opinion, you just have a comma and then it should just be facilities renewal. Facilities renewal is the same as library, rec.
Got it. Yeah, yeah. Very good.
And then you want to get rid of essential? And then you wanna get rid of essential after eighty-four percent allocated to services?
Right. Cause it's it's. The people will decide if they're essential. We think they're still, that's what they'll be deciding when they vote.
So may we consider replacing the word essential with other other services?
Yeah, if you have, I think if you have the room, it doesn't bother me.
And and not because you wanna suggest that these are examples of the services that we anticipate funding, but it's not a exhaustive list.
Right.
Well, that's what the such as is for.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure that we I.
I I I would suggest, if I may, I think we we have shown in concept that we can add facilities renewal in there right now.
Yeah, right.
I I I rather like to talk to our team about certain keywords that that we we have to evaluate as with respect also for the signal that they send to to voters and as part of the ballot language crafting. So if you're okay with that, I think we 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 got the notion, the general direction from the council and the sentiment to include facilities renewal and cut a little back here and there. And when we come back to you on July twenty-ninth, we have probably a ninety-nine percent solution then for your consideration.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Now, I had another phrase I wanted to put in there.
Okay.
I'm joking. It's it's ten, it's ten, ten lines long. No, ten words long. Thank you. I think the wordsmithing that we're doing, I I think we're so close, we'll be good. Cause we're given direction. I think it's real clear where we are option to. The language on the ballot, the proposed ballot statement is almost all there. So that's what I think our staff was wanting. And I think we have clear consensus there. Tyler, you wanted to, since we've cleared up that business, you wanted to talk a little bit more about some other related topics? Please, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so I I don't imagine that there's support. So I don't wanna waste too much time on it. But it's just following up on the point that I was trying to make at the last council meeting regards to doing the two ballot initiatives that was being proposed by staff from the last council meeting. So I I think it's important for us to keep in mind that the goal of us doing this is because of, perhaps we should have done it before, as been indicated by several people in the public from from the the communities. But we're doing this because of the pandemic and the impacts that it's having to us. And and the priority that we're giving is to putting funds aside so that we can get employees re-employed that have been laid off. And so here we are allocating sixteen percent to a program while we're trying to focus on providing more funds to 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 provide services again and get things back up and running. Now, the argument could be made that we're taking the funds from N C I P anyways. But I think really what we're getting at here is, and 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 I imagine if we had a conversation with the neighborhood associations, that their issue is bigger than us increasing T O T. Even before we started taking their funding, the issue that I understood was that they have these backlog of of projects that weren't being executed in a timely manner. And so I think that there's a space to meet the needs of what they're looking for, but also appropriately allocating the dollars in the city so that we're meeting all of the obligations. So N C I P is just one program. And even after we get out of this COVID nineteen experience and we get the majority of our our laid off employees re-employed, there's still not gonna be enough funding to do all the capital improvements, the the facility restorations that we need to do. There is a lot of funding that's needed for that. And so I think it's really important for us to keep that in mind from a business perspective, from a fiscal hawk perspective. It's important for us to make sure that we're appropriately allocating our resources. And I'll just say one other thing, because this is something that has been said over and over again from people that are just seem like they're in complete opposition of this idea is that it's cleaner if we just do the one. But it it it's actually, in my mind, it's easier if we do two because it lowers the threshold and correct me if I'm wrong, staff. But from the conversation last week, it would, it would redo or two weeks ago, it would lower the threshold as far as the percentage of votes that are needed to fifty percent plus one. And it would give us seventy-five, seventy-five words times two, because now we have two ballot measures to be able to communicate whatever that message is. So I'm not sure with the how the argument of it's cleaner has any ground to stand on when when we have a better way of being able to communicate it. And 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 I'll, sorry, I will say one more point. Again, I I understand the concern too by the neighborhoods in regards to the fact that we took their funding. So maybe what we could do as a council is commit to utilizing that increase to help pay back the the projects that had been allocated, the funding that had been taken away. And once that's kind of the coffers there are filled up again, we can utilize that for the city to be able to execute all the other things. And and maybe we can set up a relationship to where we truly allow the neighborhood associations to submit projects and have that process work. And the city manages our own capital improvement projects like like we should instead of tap trying to tap into the N C I P program.
Okay, thank you very much, Tyler. We appreciate that perspective. So I'm I'm gonna ask one final time, Hans, I I you got the clarity and your staff has consensus and direction. So our next meeting, we will have this formalized and ready for a formal vote by the council.
Yes, sir, and that will be next week, Wednesday.
Okay, really good. As usual, an excellent discussion and we'll be having a lot more. I think at this point, whether it's a fifty percent plus one or two-thirds, there are a lot of factors that are happening out there. For example, there's Prop fifteen statewide ballot that's asking to modify Proposition thirteen. And that's going to be a an a huge amount, an amazing amount of information going out there. You may have received in the mail from M P C. They're looking at a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond measure for facilities renewal. They their last one was almost twenty years ago. And I did read that M P U S D is also discussing the potential bond measure. So when we put our measure in during a pandemic, I think it's it's going to be a challenge. I'm I'm all in as far as supporting this, happy to participate. And I would just say for people who feel this is important to have this two percent increase so that visitors pay, that's really gonna take everyone to be sure they commit to try to get us over the two-third threshold. And we'll have to see. It's as is my wife and I say every morning, it's it's crazy out there. I don't think she's talking about me. I think she says it's crazy out there. But it's such unprecedented, unusual times. But I appreciate the fact that we're going forward. And as we've said a number of times, we'll let the voters decide. Council comments? Anyone wanna start? Next agenda item?
We're on, we're on thirteen now, right?
That's it.
We we just finished. We just gave clear consensus direction to our city manager. And as far as I know, that's been wrapped up.
Yeah. So Ty Tyler, did you want some feedback from your comments here? Or do you wanna do that offline?
Yeah, I mean, I I think feedback is 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 always helpful. I I I I'm not married to the ideas and what I'm saying. I'm I'm open to the dialogue. I'm just trying to speak logically about kind of my perspective and where I'm coming from. It's not, I have no personal benefit to this other than trying to do my duty and serving the constituents of the city. So I I think that that's kind of what this basis for, for us to kind of debate these these conversations.
Yeah. And and I appreciate your your thinking in terms of the sixteen percent and what we we do with that in terms of making sure we bring back services. And I I could appreciate that. I guess I would only just say we've all been through campaigns. And the last campaign I was participating in was for Measure G. And that was the one percent sales tax increase. And I think tampering with the current charter that's the sixteen percent for the neighborhood improvement, community improvement program. I think what I've come to know through the years of being a resident of Monterey and being in the same house for thirty-eight years and having worked for the city for twenty-six years is I heard loud and clear from so many folks that the N I P was more than a program, but it was an exercise where citizens were able to participate at the most detailed process and have a great deal of influence over how the money is spent and really a model of government inside of government. So I would fear tampering with that at all. I don't know how it was landed on to be sixteen percent. But I think we've gotta put the house back together. I think the improvement program is so important to me. I wanna see it refunded. And I wanna see us get back to doing the projects that they've they've identified. And so many of them have been citywide, community-wide projects that we all benefit from. And I would say that is a model that so many other cities strive for, but have never gotten it quite right. And I think our community gets it right with that. And I think that if we were talking about trying to undo that with a second ballot measure, I think it's just not the direction that I my constituents tell me that they wouldn't wanna go. I think one other thing is some of the list of the projects that we were not able to get to started to change with some personnel changes and process change. Speaking of the city engineer that was assigned to the community neighborhood program, and that list started to get smaller and smaller. So I think that is on the operations side that we should pay attention to. And we should make sure that when we get this back and there is money, that the operations of the program works as efficient as it can so we don't have projects on the list for nine years. So that that would be my overall goal.
Yeah, good. If I may, we'll just weigh in as the with all humbleness. As the founder of the N C I P, I can remember Richard Rissello and I left a meeting about nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four with a governmental agency that operates within the city. And Richard said to me, you know what? There has to, you've heard this story, I'll make it brief. There should be a way where the residents, the people that live here can see a direct benefit from tourism. Now, there's an indirect benefit and also you need to go back thirty-five years. So we see projects done in all of the commercial areas. We see projects done in the tourist areas. Where where are the projects in the neighborhoods? Well, we're part of this partnership. And where's the direct benefit? In fact, Mayor Dan Albert suggested, and you'll see it on all the N C I P projects where it says funded by, partially funded by or funded by the hotel motel tax. And it was thirty-five years ago, we were having exactly, not exactly, but a similar discussion about the symbiotic relationship between tourism and the residents. So at the time when we established that, I I put up a charter amendment in nineteen eighty-five, at which point we raised the hotel motel tax. That was thirty-five years ago, from eight percent to ten percent. That increment went to, interestingly enough, two programs. I don't know if anybody else remembers this. And one was the N C I P and another one was called Community Improvement. It's a separate fund. So evidently, in nineteen eighty-eight, I don't remember that, I was still on council. We did a clarification charter amendment, and that's when we made it sixteen percent. Then over the years, I've looked at it, I've probably attended, I don't know, hundreds of N C I P meetings. I've seen our representatives who have probably put in millions of dollars of labor if we had to pay them, all of our N C I P representatives going to meetings. When there's a project such as traffic calming in Kona that benefits residents, all residents, it benefits apartments, it benefits homeowners. And have them go to the door, have them get before anything be approved, that has to have general consensus. Then they're at twelve o'clock, one o'clock, two o'clock, having public hearings as hundreds of people come in advocating for these projects. And there was a, early on, we said, well, we'll eventually run out of projects. I don't think so. Just take a look at a project or two. The kitchen addition to the library, that probably wouldn't have happened without N C I P. Our E O C, our Emergency Operations Center, that would probably wouldn't have happened without the neighborhood and and community improvement program. Look at Montecito Park, where we just took C I P money, N C I P money and C D B G money and improved a part that before COVID was hugely used by one of our less affluent areas of our city. You can take a look at, take a look at by Portilla Vista, where we redid that sidewalk because the senior citizens there had a difficulty getting in and out of their cars, accessing their their apartments. And that was an N C I P project. But the list kind of goes on and on. One of the things that I was best, lots of disappointments that we all have because of COVID nineteen. But there was a proposed N C I P project to renovate the pool surface at the Monterey Sports Center. That hopefully will be refunded someday. But so many of the projects that have been done directly benefit renters, users, tourists, homeowners, and have been citywide, community-wide projects that probably would not have been done. And so in many ways, it has been our C I P. And I if you haven't been to, I'm sure you all have been to several meetings and watched the process from the beginning of the introduction of the projects and proposals, which any citizen in the city can present, all the way to the conclusion. I think you'd be absolutely amazed the amount of citizen participation and transparency. I think it's unmatched anywhere. Yep. So I may be biased because it's one of my favorite programs, but I just share with you a little bit of the history of where it all came from.
You know, I I I, Mayor, I tell you this all the time. I really appreciate your stories because it really helps provide a a perspective and way of looking at things that that really amplifies the the history and why we are where we are and the benefits associated with it. So so I appreciate yours and Ed's comments. You know, the only thing I would say is, and and I'm hearing this through both of your comments, kind of my sense is the reason why, and I've heard this from from residents as well, the reason why it it was it was established in the first place was because the council, the city, wasn't giving priority to the residents. The residents felt like they were secondary to the to the business community. And I I think that in a lot of ways, if you ask residents, they feel that way still. And so I think it's incumbent upon us as their elected representatives to make sure that we're representing them appropriately and that they can depend upon us to execute the the dollars that they're expecting us to. And if we're being responsible with public dollars, we're not gonna create new programs because of the lack, the lack of trust that the residents have for us. We need to make sure that we're fixing the the system so that way we are utilizing those dollars as effectively as possible. So now we're dedicating staff time to run an entirely different program. I'm not even, my my point today, and and in this discussion in general, isn't even talking about getting rid of N C I P. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, let's not contribute the additional dollars. And I won't beat a dead horse there. But I will end with a comment that a resident made at a council meeting. I believe it was earlier this year. She had came to a council meeting, this is before the shelter in place, and she had said, we don't need really expensive stonework for a center divide and and a sign going into Montevista. we don't need um, really expensive stonework for a center divide and and a sign going into Montevista. A really expensive piece of work. It looks really nice, but is that what's really needed when all these other things are falling apart within the city? So, you know, I I hear you, uh, Mayor. I think that some great and wonderful things have come out of the NCIP program, and I think that there's a way that we can move forward with trying to keep that framework somehow so that we can get that community input. Um, but when it's something like a a really nice stonework center divide, when the 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 rec center is, rec centers are falling apart, and we're not putting um, capital um, capitalization funds aside for the uh, for the conference center. Uh, the library, we we're talking about wanting to do capital improvements to that, to the police and fire station, you know, uh, the list goes on. Um, and and so that's kind of where I'm at with that. And and I'm more than willing to talk to, I guess, maybe one of you offline. To not violate the brown act here, but um, anyways, I appreciate you all taking the time to to even um, to hear me out here and 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 anybody in the public, I'm I'm obviously I'm open to hearing um, your feedback and in discussion and a dialogue about what might work best for the community as we move forward here.
You know, and Tyler, I appreciate your appreciation because uh, early on, I I was honestly just thinking, could we go fifty percent plus one? Did the NCIP, did it have enough money already? But it's been pretty made clear to me that without that element, there will be active opposition and this this uh, proposal will be defeated. And then you bring up a really another good point, and I've said to this this to you a number of times. You're stretch, you're stretching me and making me think and look at, uh, you have a good perspective. I appreciate that. And that is, as a city council, if we see a project on the NCIP list, we're ultimately responsible. And if we don't think it's essential, we can cer- simply say no, remove that from the list and want you to come back with something else. So I look forward to tha- that exercise with you when we start looking at the list, and maybe that's the kind of direction we will give in the future.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be stretching and thinking with you, okay? And are we ready for council comments now? Great, another great discussion. Man, I just, ah, you get, keep me excited and keep me up at night, but that's good. Yes, please, Councilmember Dan.
Thank you. You know, um, just recently, I received a comment from the Monterey citizens about the buses running in the city of Monterey and and their capacity pertaining to social distancing. So I thought, well, since I sit on the Monterey Salinas Transit, the M S T board, I thought I'd just kind of give a a very brief update on what's going on at M S T. Uh, currently, uh, you probably already know this, but I I'd like you to to understand that that our ridership has fallen almost eighty percent over the last uh, year's number. We had three hundred and sixty thousand uh, riderships last year, and we're down to seventy thousand this year. And we're only really running essential routes in Monterey. And as you know, the the free trolley is not operating. Uh, however, when the aquarium hopefully opens up soon, there's still a bus stop on Wave Street that they can, that will accommodate those aquarium visitors. Now, back to the buses running with uh, with their capacity. Um, we are asking our passengers to maintain six feet distance between each other, and we're requiring them to wear masks. Uh, unless they're traveling together with family, so they have to stay six feet uh, distance. Uh, each bus, which is like a forty foot bus, would would handle sixty people, we can only put in ten to twelve people. As uh, and and that's very difficult, obviously. Uh, so when the bus gets too full, the passengers cannot social distance. The driver will call in and request for an extra bus to deploy and pick up uh, any passengers left behind. And that's the most important piece, that people understand that on our buses, there is social distancing and uh, we're not, we're not letting people um, uh, or we're not leaving people at the at the particular bus stops. And then the last thing, fiscally, uh, M S T is currently solvent, and that's due to federal, state COVID nineteen assistance programs like Care Act and others. So we're, actually, M S T is in in pretty good shape. The the last thing I wanted to mention is, and I'm sure everybody knows this, but I I do request uh, to end this council meeting in memory of um, Salinas Mayor Joe Gunther and former longtime Seaside Mayor Ralph Rubio, who passed away recently. Both of them, I know all of us know them and probably work with them. But both of them are known for their collaboration leadership style and their love for their community they serve. They're both Mr. Salinas and Mr. Seaside. I definitely know that we'll all miss them. So that's my comments.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Dan. Anyone else? Council comments?
No.
Um, Clyde, the only thing I would say is, um, I'm enjoying uh, the summer, even though it's foggy. Especially because all of the, as you all do, serve on uh, committees. Uh, it's what you would call the July break, so it's been, it's been nice not having a lot of those extra meetings as well. Uh, I'm so glad that I was able to have my family be flexible and allow me to postpone the trip uh, that we were going to take and be able to be here tonight. So uh, I never want to miss the council meetings, and I'm glad I wasn't uh, I wasn't pulled away and I was able to be here tonight. I appreciate, I appreciate and enjoy uh, the conversations and uh, as they say, making uh, making sausage is not always pretty. As and as we collaborate with our community and our business areas, and we try and get it right. Uh, the heart's in the right place, and we hope everybody can understand that some of these decisions are tough, but I think we've made the right decisions tonight. And so now as an invitation, um, campaigns uh, do take a lot of effort. Uh, do take some uh, education in the community. And so those that support this in the community, uh, we would call you for action, uh, to step up and help us, make sure everybody knows what they're voting for with the increase of T O T. And make sure that no one is missing out on the education piece, and they can help support it.
Thank you, Ed. Well said. City manager reports?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a very short mentioning that the candidate filing period is open and it ends August seventh. And if Monterey residents are interested in running either for mayor or council, uh, please feel free to contact the city clerk at cityclerk@monterey.org or call us at six four six three nine three five for more information and uh, next steps. And that's all what I have to say uh, under city manager comments.
Okay, good. And and we definitely want to uh, to adjourn in in memory of Joe Gunther uh, as well as Ralph Rubio. I had the opportunity to be co-mayors with him. And they uh, they were, had many similarities. They they were always willing to be on a board, a commission, ranging from the airport to homelessness to Ambeq and maybe Fora, right, Alan? And and so they really were such a good people. Very direct, you never had to worry about what they were thinking. Both had a twinkle in their eye. They like, we all like to do tease each other a little bit, but all we with with good humor and a great twinkle in their eyes. So they will be missed. Uh, we uh, give our our thoughts uh, to their families. We are, as a city, um, sending them cards on behalf of all of us. So in in memory of Ralph Rubio and Joe Gunther, we are adjourned.